Good afternoon, late afternoon, early evening. So it is Monday, July 12th at 5:00 PM. And we are having our joint workshop with the city council on to my left and the BEDC board to my right. And the last time we were all together, it was a very different picture. Folks have come and gone since then. It was January 15th of 2020. So it has been 18 months since these two groups of people have been together. I started asking for this meeting several months ago, and I am so glad and special thanks to Paul and Janora for working together with their staffs to get the agenda together. And I would be remiss if we don't start out by a round of applause for our city secretary for the wonderful meal that we all got today. My friend over here in the restaurant business will understand that not a lot of restaurants are open on Monday. And they took a menu and went shopping. And the reason that's a box you've never seen before, that is compliments of the city secretary's office. And they put together the meal. And we really, we all appreciate that very much. I know it's kind of early in the evening. We have a chock full agenda. And I want to introduce the folks behind me because I found out at a TML board meeting that council member Jackson had never met our EDC attorney. So council, you know Mr. Borquez and our city attorney. And BEDC board, you certainly know Charlie Zek, our BEDC attorney. And I meant to look up before the meeting. Charlie, when did you become our BEDC attorney?
Five?
Like 18?
No, before that.
Was it?
It was 17.
Yeah. Charlie's been the BEDC attorney longer than Alan has been our city attorney. Mr. Plunkett, do you know when he came?
Yeah, I think it would be around the same time, but I think we got there first.
Oh, it's going to be one of those meetings. Okay. So we're recording this, and this is a different setup. We're trying to do this to, it's so much easier when we can see each other to converse. And I promise Colin and council, you guys are all well aware of this. This is the, if you are not speaking, please turn your mic off. And if you are speaking, turn on your mic. And you have to get obnoxiously close to these mics or you don't get picked up. And then Colin's phone blows up with people at home saying, "I can't hear what they're saying." So if you'll help us with the sound, that'll be great. So 5:00, and I'm calling the council meeting to order. And I will recognize the chair of the BEDC board, Kathryn Nash.
Thank you, Mayor Schrader. And I'd also like to call the BEDC board to order for this workshop. I want to thank you. We're getting ready to get into our very busy season. And you're going to be called on multiple times for long meetings. Thank you also. I know this is your busy time for the budget. I want to especially thank the staff who put in a lot of hours. Janora and Paul, I know that you put in, and I know the city staff put in a lot of time as well. So just to, for those of, we have a few new board members, just, this is a really great opportunity to get clarification, to get information, because we've yet to have our strategy meeting. And so this will inform us as we go into that session. I believe it's the last week of July. So ask your questions and take your notes so that we can turn around and discuss them more deeply as we begin to work on our strategy, since we haven't done a strategy now for two years. And we've almost accomplished that which has been on our strategy. And then also, I would really like to challenge everybody to beat the three-hour time limit and at least come in at 2:59, at least, at least. So we have a strict timetable. We're going to try to stay to it, but don't let that shorten your questions. Ask as many questions as you need to. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Nash. And also, Mr. Gossett, it's Bill, correct? So his name tag says William, council, but it's Bill. So if we're, hey, Guy or Bill, either one, I think works really well. So with that, we are turning things over to Mr. Hoffman and Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mayor Schrader. Thank you, Chair Nash. And you covered things very, very well. There is a lot of information we are looking to share with you this evening. We do have a bit of a plan for how we get done within that three-hour time amount that Chair Nash just spoke about. But to echo what she just said, please do, we will take the time we need. And if we need to schedule subsequent meetings, then we can certainly do that. And of course, the 8:00 thing's not hard and fast, but we do want to be respectful of your time and your energy. And so we did work to try to come up with a plan that is accomplishable within those three hours. I will suggest that there are some takeaways for this evening's meeting that are more important than others. Again, there are future strategic planning sessions that the BEDC has planned. We respect and appreciate that. Both entities have more budget work to do, so tonight's certainly not the end. But in a lot of ways, it's a beginning or an ongoing of an important series of discussions I think we're going to want to have over the next several months about how the city's strategic priorities and the BEDC's strategic priorities intersect and align. And that's largely the theme about what you will be hearing Paul and Janora and Trey and Jean say tonight, that there are lots of opportunities for alignment. And we're going to dive into some detail here about what the current, understand that they are amendable strategic priorities that the BEDC has published and have. And similarly, those priorities that guide what city staff does every day as we affect the development process. We'll end the discussion with some overview of next steps. Again, going back to what those future meetings are and potential topics for those budget, more budget-related discussions. And I'll echo too those sentiments about the staff work that's happened over the last few weeks as we prepared. The information we're sharing with you tonight so that we can get your feedback on it. Really have enjoyed working with Janora and Jean and Trey. And we, I think, I can speak for Janora on this. Key to success is pretty clear that what happens every day at the staff level is constant and it's collaborative, and that we're sharing information on a easy exchange, understanding that the rules are different, understanding that perhaps not everything can be shared. But to the extent we can communicate clearly and often about what we're seeing, what we're being asked to do, what the BEDC staff is seeing and what they're being asked to do, the more information we can share on an ongoing basis, the better. So I appreciate that spirit that went into preparing for tonight.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for being here tonight. And I echo the city manager sentiments with all the work that has gone into planning this meeting. I appreciate all the efforts from Jennifer Bills, Fabiola, Trey Joe, Paul, and everyone at the city. And a special thanks to Jean and Angela for their assistance in helping me become more familiar, because I'm still the new kid on the block. I'm learning a lot, and I've learned a lot through this process. I look forward tonight to the discussion between the council and the board. And I know that I will learn a lot from you and how you interact. What my takeaway would be is that we all go away from here tonight with a feeling of accomplishment and a better understanding for what guides an economic development corporation in the state of Texas and what guides the city council. And if we all do that, I know we will walk away with the beginning or moving forward with a resilient partnership that benefits our entire community into the future. So thank you all for being here, and I look forward to how this all turns out. Let's get started. Charlie, if you would, the mayor, I think, has already introduced you, but if y'all would, please give a warm welcome to the BEDC attorney, Charlie Zek.
Does this work? Oh, it does. I'm going to, if that's all right with everybody. Oh, gosh, that's even better. I'm not comfortable in front of, so y'all, y'all take it easy on me. Oh, I have to push the buttons as well? This is getting really complicated. Which, I can push a button if you just show me what button to push. That one right, okay. Oh, that's easy. It's the center one, right? Excellent. Even I can do that. How are y'all today? Thank you very much for having me. Alan, thanks for putting up with me sitting right next to you. I appreciate it. And no, I'm not going to break into Kenny Rogers, Kenny Rogers song, although it could be tempting. You do need to know when to hold them and when to fold them. I was asked to just give a brief presentation on economic development corporations. I'm not sure, I mean, my board, as you're scattered throughout here, and I'm, this way, this is wonderful, knows exactly what it is that our economic development corporation does, what they're, oh, what did I push? There we go. I'm not sure much city council knows stands the responsibilities and the parameters, the legal parameters for economic corporations. And so that's kind of what I'm going to do. It's going to be a very high, broad brush, high-level outlook. I give this presentation for several entities, and it, you know, it's going to be from 45 minutes to an hour. I'm not going to do that to you. So I'm happy to answer any legal questions. Policy is all about what y'all decide, but I'm happy to answer any legal questions. And this is just, hopefully, will give you a broad outlook. So I B corporations were created by the Texas Legislature. And I'm going to go over with you their authority, what the board should like, and what type of projects can be engaged in with funds created that are collected by economic development corporations. So first of all, Texas Local Government Code, chapters 501 through chapters 505 are the chapters of the government code which dictate the parameters that type B corporations operate under. If you don't know how to get to the Texas Local Government Code, or you've decided not to spend the dollars on the hard copy like I have, simply Google Texas Legislature, click on the first link, and then after that, they'll see a link that says statutes. Click on the statutes, and you'll find all the codes that have been adopted by the Texas Legislature. Click on the Texas Local Government Code link and go to chapters 501 through 505. The specific chapters associated with type B corporations are 501, 503, and 505. 505 deals specifically only with type B corporations. And then 501 deals with the general structure of corporations and type A corporations. Chapter 501 of the Texas Local Government Code contains the provisions governing development corporations in general, like I just said, type A corporations, type B corporations. Chapter 502 deals with type A and type B corporations. 505 deals with type B corporations. And then the thing that folks tend to forget is that the Texas Business Organizations Code, chapter 22, Nonprofit Corporations Act, also governs the rules associated with economic development corporations. What the statute says is that where the local government code is silent or where there is a conflict, where there's a conflict with the Texas Local Government Code, the Nonprofit Corporations Act is what prevails. All right? So we can't forget, we have that statute as well. Section 501 dot 051 authorizes the creation of a corporation. Section 501 dot 056 talks about the approval of the certificate of formation. It's important to remember that unlike municipal development districts, a type B corporation is an actual corporation that has filed certificates of organization, bylaws, and it's a separate entity, just like a nonprofit corporation. All right? Section 501 dot 062 details how we appoint the board. 501 dot 064 requires approval of the bylaws. 501 dot 073 requires approval of all programs, expenditures, and corporations of the board, annual reviews, any financial, oh, let me back up. Everything that I'm talking about is something that city council does. All right? So 501 051, city council authorizes the creation of the corporation. 506, council approves the certificate of formation. 501 062, council appoints the board of directors. 501 064, council approves the bylaws. 501 073 approves all programs and expenditures of the corporation, annually review all the financial statements, and is entitled to access to all the books and records. And 501 007 states that a municipality may not lend its credit or grant public money or another thing of value in aid of the corporation, except under a contract authorized under the Texas Local Government Code 380 dot 002, which is the economic, chapter 380, which is economic development for cities. I say all this to say that, and to remind folks that, in the end, and I say this to all my economic development clients and all my city attorney clients, in the end, city council holds the purse strings and authority over all economic development corporations, which is why I stress how important it is, and why the mayor so thoughtfully decided to try to make this happen, that we have regular conversations between economic development corporations and the city councils. Because if our interests are not aligned, we will have conflict. The conflict occurs more often politically, which is nothing that I get involved in, but I get to watch on the sidelines, which is entertaining, but not good for our communities. Right? And so I was horrified to hear that we had not had a joint meeting of these two entities for 18 months, because I find it difficult to understand how your interests can be aligned if we're all rolling down the road in the same path if we're not meeting together to discuss what that path looks like. Stress, the authority the city council has with respect to appointment of board members, expenditure of funds, approval of bylaws, all those things, to remind everybody that we need to be moving down the same path together. So just generally, the board of directors, the city council appoints seven directors under a type B corporation. Three of the seven cannot be employees, officers, or members of the city and government body. That's written really weird, but typical of the legislature and how they draft legislation. What that essentially means is that three, four of the members are anybody that you want them to be, right? And three of the members can be appointed from city council, or employees, or somebody of that nature. All right? Members are appointed for a two-year term. And again, members serve at the will and pleasure of the city. So let's talk about revenue use, because that's going to, you have to understand the structures of revenue use when you talk about the goals and objectives of the city and how they align with the authorized use of the funds by the economic development corporation. An economic development corporation can only spend sales tax dollars that it collects, and remember, it is sales tax dollars. It's not adware on taxes, right? Sales tax dollars, half a percent here, yes? Half a percent collected on sales tax goes to the economic development corporation for purposes of economic development under the authority of the statute. And you're limited in the way that you can spend them. So city council and the board need to know and understand the legal parameters under which you can spend those funds, so that when we think about our, we want our communities to grow and how we want to, to make that work, we can see where we can use those economic development dollars through 4B and where we may have to use general sales tax dollars out of the city funds to make those things work. All right? So for a type B corporation, you can use a broad variety of projects, broader than a type A corporation. And I'm not going to go into type A because you're not a type A. However, you can use dollars for type A projects. Type A projects are found in chapter 501 of the Local Government Code. So if you want to read what type of projects those can be used for, chapter 501 of the Texas Local Government Code is going to tell you that. Generally speaking, type A projects are for primary job creation. So if it creates a primary job, it's an appropriate project for a type B corporation. And those are very limited and very specific, always, and I've been doing this 21 years, always have to go back, read the statute, see if the primary job is listed within the categories listed in the statute, determine if it's appropriate primary job creation. And if the answer to that is yes, then you can spend the dollars for that primary job The one exception under type A corporation authority projects is infrastructure. One of the type A projects that a type B corporation can do is roads, street, railways, internet, telecommunications facilities. They don't have to create primary jobs, but that's the only type of project under 501 that you can do that does not need to create primary jobs. In other words, but it has to promote new or expanded business enterprises. That's the statement. So certain infrastructure projects that promote new or expanded business development. What does that mean? It means that you have to have findings that establish that the infrastructure project will promote new or expanded business development. Now, granted, the courts have given great deference to the legislative bodies of the corporations and the city councils to determine what promotes new or expanded business development. Pretty broad discretion. If you want to know how much broad discretion, when you get an opportunity, ask Alan, and I'm going to put him on the spot for later, but it'll give him plenty of time to look on Westlaw right now, but he knows the answer anyway, so it doesn't matter. It's the same sort of broad discretion that city councils get when determining a public purpose, for purposes of using your dollars. And the courts have given very broad discretion to city councils to determine what a public purpose is for purposes of spending your tax dollars. So it's a broad, it's a big hole to drive a truck through, but it still can't be arbitrary and capricious. It still has to have some relationship to the promotion of new or expanded business enterprises. That's infrastructure projects, roads, streets, sewer, electricity, things of that nature. So those are type A projects. Type B projects are found in chapter 505 of the Local Government Code. So, oops, I went one too far. How do I back this up? There's no going back. Wait, oh, okay, there is another, all right, okay. So it has to be found by the board, and also the city council has to approve it as well, remember? But found by the board to be required or suitable for use for projects related to business enterprises that create or retain primary jobs. That's the type A that I was just talking about. Certain sports venue projects on an election. It's required to go to an election for certain sports venue projects. Small city promotion of new and expanded business enterprises. That's the one that is wonderful for cities like the city of Bastrop, because that's the one that gives the greatest flexibility to the use of your sales tax dollars. If it's found by the board to promote new or expanded business enterprises, then you can spend your tax dollars on it. But you have to have those findings. And it goes back again to what I was saying earlier with infrastructure projects. It still has to promote new or expanded business enterprises. You have to have those findings. And I'm not going to tell you whether or not it's legal, and I doubt that Alan will tell you whether or not it's legal, because we don't get to decide as your lawyers whether or not it promotes new or expanded business enterprises. That's not my job. It's your job as city council and as board members and staff members associated with these bodies to determine whether or not a project, an expenditure, will promote new or expanded business enterprises. And there could be factual situations in one circumstance where a certain expenditure does promote newer and expanded business enterprises, but in another circumstance, it doesn't. Right? So it's always going to be dependent on the facts with respect to that decision-making. You can also use type B sales tax for professional and amateur sports and athletic facilities, tourism and entertainment facilities. Notice how those are delineated by semicolons, not commas. Convention and public park purposes and events. Notice it says convention center? It doesn't say civic center. Related store, restaurant, concession, parking, and transportation facilities, related street, water, and sewer facilities. So this is one where, for example, I'll give two examples. The city of New Braunfels, and I've been to New Braunfels a lot for two reasons. One, I was there in-house the city attorney for about five years back in the early 2000s. And two, I still live there. So I kind of pay attention to what they do, not a whole lot, but kind of pay attention to what they do. The first one is, I don't know if you're familiar with New Braunfels, but if you drive on the loop, they've got a beautiful baseball facility on the loop there. They've got like six fields with lighting. It's a gorgeous sports complex, and it is designed for sporting events, for folks to come in and bring, I'm not, I never had a son. I had a daughter. She didn't play softball or baseball. She was theater and musical arts, so I went to a lot of musicals, high school musicals, grade school musicals. She knows how I feel about having to go to all those high schools. She's very successful now, so I really shouldn't say anything. But it's a sports complex for that purpose, right? For amateur sports and athletic purposes, and that's what it's for. Another example is the city of New Braunfels built just recently, its very first really nice, what I would consider recreational, it's a recreational facility. But the 4B funds weren't used on the recreational facility. The 4B funds were used on the Olympic swimming pool where you could have sporting events, amateur sporting events, high school swimming. I don't know what it's called, and it's not like baseball, right? But kids still do league swimming, I guess? Right, yeah. And, yeah, UI, so, yeah, right. And so the funds could be used for that, right? Because that's a professional or amateur sporting facility that, you know, anybody could come do their competition in. But me going down to Dos Rec, which is what it's called to lift weights, that's not what these funds were for, but they can be used for that. And those are two examples just off the top of my head. And of course, anything related to that as listed in the statute. Also, they can be used for affordable housing. I've had one client that has used type B dollars for affordable housing projects because they're having trouble having enough affordable housing for purposes of having workers in their, come into their community with the businesses that were being established in their community. So we use those dollars to create affordable housing for the workers that were coming with the corporations, yes, industry. Sure, workforce housing, but the term statute is affordable housing, so long as it's affordable housing, whatever that means within your community, that's always going to be different, right? You can use those dollars. And we did that, actually, the city of Burnett is where we did that at. It actually worked really, really well. It was fantastic. So finally, making, I hope I haven't taken too long. So finally, the last part of it is teamwork. And I'm just going to circle back to how great, how just wonderful it is to see all of y'all in the room, working together for your community, to try to get everybody to work in the same direction. But also, because I'm a lawyer, staying within the parameters of what we can use type B project funds for, and I don't, my guess is Alan has the same position that I do on these things. I will defend anything that my client does, so long as I don't have to put a bag over my head in order to make the argument. All right? That's my, that's where I draw the line. It's my bag over the head limit. I don't want to embarrass myself. That's my big thing. So if there's anything I can do for anybody, please let me know. The board, and of course, Alan, as city attorney, has tremendous depth of knowledge and experience as well, and will help city council through any issues that you might have as well. But the important thing is, we're a team. Hopefully, we're all in the same direction. Thanks.
Thank you, Charlie. I want to personally thank him. I was on a TML training, and Charlie made this presentation. I was like, that's awesome. It's just a real good way to get everybody on the same page, and I really appreciate him doing that. Charlie, when we talked earlier, I believe that best practices, you indicated it's a good idea that we maybe meet twice a year if you control.
Sure, right. In my best world, four-time, quarterly is great. I mean, like a major planning session to get everybody moving down the road, and then meetings to say, here's where we are, here's where we want to be, to make sure we're moving in the same direction. Twice a year, I recognize, you know, four times a year may be tough. Twice a year, I recognize, you know, four times a year may be tough and multiple, but two years is, twice a year is fantastic.
Well, and almost two years is way too long.
Way too long. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Council, board, any questions for Charlie? All right, thank you very, very much.
Ah, it's not on. Now can you hear me? All right. Again, I was just saying thank you to everybody for showing up, and let's keep putting this together. I want to start talking about the, the city's focus areas, kind of the priorities in the B3 code, and then how they align with the, with the focus areas that's been established at a council level. One of the first questions is, you know, how do the, again, how do the focus areas and the priorities of the B3 code relate? Why it's important that we have a shared vision? You know, there was quite a bit of community engagement as we went through this process for the, for the B3 codes. It was a good 18-month of focus between the staff and the policymakers. Again, a lot of public engagement. And then hopefully, the question we can answer is where we're aligned and where we can find additional opportunities to remain aligned between the city and the EDC. The three big intent statements from the, from the focus areas in the, in the B3 code, again, it's an intent-based code. One is fiscal sustainability. The other is geographic sensitivity. And I'll talk a little bit more about what all that means, and then the perpetuation of authentic Bastrop. I get that question all the time. What is authentic Bastrop? And I want to kind of define that hopefully a little better, at least from our perspective. Again, that fiscal sustainability, when we went into this code rewrite, was based off a high-level fiscal analysis that basically took the expense related to the, with the revenue, and we only laid a layer of the streets there. And what did they like to replace us over 20 years? And we came to the conclusion really quick is, hey, we're not generating near enough as we're going to spend in the future, and we need to fix that. So that was the reason for the fiscal sustainability. The geographic sensitivity, it's a couple of things. One, we understood that our current zoning code was written a certain way, but there's, Bastrop's pretty unique. There's three different types of land, three different types of soil types, three different types of elevation, right? You've got everything to the east where there's pine trees and, and, and much more steep cliffs and drop-offs and, and creeks and gullies and all that good stuff. And as you make your way towards the river, again, the, the soil changes, the development pattern changes, and you move out west, and it gets a little flatter, a little elevation. But again, it's so flat, it has little issues with drainage, which was another reason we thought that was important. And we wanted to make sure that we gave pause to review everything that was geographically sensitive, and the codes were flexible enough to, to work around that. Again, that perpetuation of authentic Bastrop, we'll talk about what that means in this next slide. And it was really about the priorities in the code. It's said it this way, it said they wanted to retain Bastrop's unique character and charm. And the reason, the way we did that was based on the development patterns. And the development pattern was a, was a standard 330-gridded block. So everything was based off of how the public realm and the private realm interact together, right? So it was really about establishing the block structure early on, and then a little bit of architectural stuff that goes on with how you interact with that public realm. And that's, that's where that authentic Bastrop term comes from. I know authentic means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. Sometimes it's just a feeling, but in this particular case, it has to do with the block structure. To develop that fiscally sustainable future for the city of Bastrop, the goal here, and there could still be some work here that I think we have to do, but the development should, should generate enough value per acre to maintain the infrastructure that supports it. So your piece of property should generate enough value per acre to take care of the street, the drainage, and all of that stuff's in for maintenance forever, right? Because the developer makes a decision one time to build it, and then we maintain it in perpetuity. So it was really important that we made sure that whatever comes here is, is, is taking care of that. Again, to protect the natural environment, the code, the flexibility of the B3 code allowed for exceptions in the zoning. So what that means is, not only does it allow for exceptions to a street width or something of that nature, but it also allows us to have different types of development patterns in different areas. So we talked a little bit about the eastern part of town where there's mountains, or there's hills, I wouldn't call them mountains, let's call them hills, and there's some gullies, and there's, there's, there's creeks and all that good stuff in the way. So we allow a different type of development pattern there, and it's a clustered or a village center, which means it can be more aligned with the county's toad habitat. So you can really build a conservative or a conservation subdivision in that area. And all that can be done through what is called a warrant process. So they'll come in with what they want to build on their neighborhood regulating plan, depending on the size of the development. And then the things that you don't want to have to build, you can do that by warrant if they meet one of those three intents, if it's geographically sensitive, fiscally sustainable, or so on and so forth. Want to talk here?
Thank you. So all of that culminates in a list of focus areas that are.
All of that culminates in a list of focus areas adopted by the city council that is intended to guide the city staff in our, in our day-to-day workings, not just on development process-related stuff, but, but literally everything we do. There, there are certain things that well-managed cities do to make sure there's good planning going on, and, and I think some of those fundamentals are, are done here in Bastrop, thankfully, and have been done here for, for a few years. Here in Bastrop, we have a comprehensive plan that was developed as a result of a whole lot of public input, and finally adopted with a Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation and city council action in, in 2016. It is good practice to update comprehensive plans every five years, and so we will, we have started conversations with the city council about updating elements of our comprehensive plan next fiscal year, and suggesting that that includes the, the future land use plan, that's an element of the comprehensive plan. That comprehensive plan has a 20-year planning horizon attached to it, 20-plus-year planning horizon attached to it. The, the B3 codes and that process that Trey was just describing can be pointed back very directly to the, those provisions of the comprehensive plan. A couple of years ago, at a session sort of like this, a planning session of the city council, they first created those nine focus areas. A good planning practice would entail that those focus areas have a shorter-term planning horizon than, than 20 years. And I think it makes sense to think about the next five years when you're thinking about focus areas. Last May, the city council reviewed those focus areas, and just a couple of weeks ago, adopted amended language associated with those. I didn't plan to go through any detail about the specifics for each of those, but here just trying to make the point that we really do try here in Bastrop to do a good job of making sure that comprehensive plan doesn't just sit on a shelf. It's a living and breathing document, but while it has a focus, it is a very broad and general and long-term focus. And what the focus areas do, as the word would imply, allows us to zero in more on, more on the day-to-day. And you can easily see just from the short descriptions of the focus areas that are on the slide, that there's a good parallel between those focus areas and the priorities and those intents that are in the B3 codes that Trey just described. The fiscal responsibility part is familiar to you from that. The uniquely Bastrop part is part of that as well. Economic vitality, which is what everyone in the room is about, unique environment, pays attention to those differing environmental characteristics that Trey just described. And, and another important subject that does speak to our development requirements is that focus area, that priority of, of, of multimodal connectedness. If there's a, if there's an issue that we deal with the most with large-scale developers, it's over that, and I'll just use the word, that burden that the B3 code places on development to provide for that multimodal connectedness and compliance with the city's master transportation plan. That, that is something we work through every day here with, as city staff. As, as Trey mentioned, there are, there are, there is more flexibility in all of that than I think people realize, and we try to help people see where there's flexibility and what those actual standards are. And we'll continue to work through policy issues associated with that with the city council. But I'm not trying to sugarcoat this, that, that, that roadway development responsibility that the codes puts on developers is, is significant. I'll also say that that's not, that's not so different from any other city I've ever worked with in, in my career. It is not unique to the city of Bastrop that we ask developers and property owners to take care of that transportation responsibility in accordance with the law that, that does provide that we analyze the impact that development is happening on development growth around them, and that they be responsible for it. And that's a good segue into that last item about managing growth. That is a significant priority of the Bastrop City Council that we take seriously.
And that's exactly something I wanted to expand on. We talk an awful lot about the, the building block codes, right, or the B3 codes, but during that time, all of the codes were updated, subdivision.
Right.
The building codes, and that was all done based off these focus areas.
Drainage standards.
The drainage standards. And that had to do with community safety, that had to do with the multimodal mobility, right? And all of that, again, ends up with that managed growth in mind, but it truly was an entire encompassing bit of work for the, over a two-year period. And you're, you're absolutely right. The only thing that is new is the form-based zoning. All those other regulations were in place prior to that. The real big difference is the zoning change.
Okay.
So I'd just like to make the comment, Councilmember Crouch, you have mentioned more than once the, the desire for the bike lanes, and that, that's an example. And you know firsthand how hard it is to retrofit in a, a bike lane. So when we're moving forward and we're asking somebody to build a bike lane, they say, my development doesn't need a bike lane, I don't want a bike lane, and we say, yes, but we want to be able to have multi-mobility around the city. So that, that's an example of where, you know, if you're, if you were solely looking at the BDC, it'd be like, well, I'm not going to require a bike lane. And if you're looking at the city, you're saying, well, I'm following the focus areas and the, and what the policy that's been set, so gee, we may have to work something out. I'd just like to offer that up as an example, if you have any comments.
I think this slide's great news. I do think it, it shows we're aligned, and we'll let Ms. Janora talk about the stuff there on the left side. But we basically took the, the objective, which was strengthening the product of your, of your strategic plan, and then she's going to talk about the action items.
For the, the three bullet points that we have listed here, the speculative building in the Bastrop Business and Industrial Park, we're finding in economic development less and less that you see a site selector looking for a speculative building. What we're hearing more and more is, we want shovel-ready sites. Don't worry so much about that spec building. Worry about the infrastructure and having your site shovel-ready. Because so many times when they come to our communities, they've looked at our website. They've been here, sometimes two and three times before we know it. They have a pretty good idea of where they want to be, and so they're ready to move a lot of the time. So I anticipate that all three of these bullet points will be reviewed, revised, and amended in the upcoming strategic planning process, which will take place on the 26th of the, of this month, in a workshop with the board. Also, under work to convince the community of the merits of attracting a new technological or technical college in Bastrop was, I think, targeted at TSTI, the State Technological Institute. And that may still be something that the board embraces and wants to move forward with. That's a discussion for them, and, and where we move from that. I know that we've seen some expansion with ACC and some of the classes that they're developing. And then develop the sports destination complex for local use and destination attraction. I do know that in reviewing the Garner report, the scope there and the focus was not only developing something that would benefit local residents, but how do we bring in, promote expansion of, of tourism in the community? Because entering new revenue into the community should be key to all of our efforts in helping to perpetuate your economic development programs, your tourism programs, and business expansion, and supporting existing businesses here. So as far as business retention expansion, from my point of view, I think the board will probably be looking at that. I hope that the board and council will consider, how do we build and expand businesses that support our existing businesses here in the community? So as a sports complex, I think it's healthy for us to look at, and the Garner report really addresses that as not just a local sports complex, but one that draws sporting events from outside the community.
So board, what I recall, those of us that were around back in January of '20 when we had this conversation, was it was the classic, the regional tournaments, the soccer tournaments and stuff, that several of us have kids and we're driving them to Sam Marcus or wherever, and that their parents come and spend the weekend, they're staying in the hotel. So we knew that it was going to have to be a number, enough of a number of fields to be able to support, and I'm saying a regional tournament, there may be better words, but is that what you guys are recalling from our discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. And council, I think that's what we visited about in the sports complex as well, is something that honestly could benefit the locals and have the tourists both, but keep us from having to go stay in another city and spend money in another city when we would like folks to come do that here.
Okay. And again, just on the, the right-hand side of the screen, we think at a city level, this is the focus areas that, that these action items met. So, and there may be an opportunity as you redevelop the new action items to meet even more. So again, there's nine of these, so we can meet all we can. Again, execution of plan was another goal in the strategic plan the EDC provided, and it was to create a one-stop shop for permitting. And I just want to talk a little bit about we, what we've done last year or two to try to do that. And we entered a wholesale water agreement with Aqua, which allows us to serve someone in our wastewater CCN. So when you come to the city, we can serve you water, we can serve you wastewater, we review your drainage, we'll manage all of the infrastructure and review and inspections. And all of that can be done now with a certain amount of these agreements that were put in place. Again, we started the construction of the 2 million gallon a day wastewater treatment plant, which I think is a huge step to managing the development and executing that, because that is something we were lacking for years and years and years. And I think Bastrop's always been primed to really explode, it just hadn't quite figured out what it was going to do with its utilities, and this is, this is really what we did to try to make it work. We updated that drainage criteria in the building codes, which we talked about. Again, that was all based off some of those focus areas. We established a development coordinator position. Everybody's familiar with Ms. Viviana. She does a lot of that for us. She's actually the liaison to the community. She is the facing-forward person that you talk to, will schedule a meeting, help you with the software. And then we added a software, which some folks are familiar with, it's called MyGov. And what that allows us to do is to process quite a bit more than we were able to do by hand prior to, and it's a good, it's a good software that holds not only us accountable, but also holds the developer accountable, or whoever's applying. It really keeps good track and a good record of when you turn stuff in, when we turn it back to you, and things of that nature. And then the development process for doing different. And what that means is, and it sounds a little odd, but what that really means is, if you can't fit within the flexibility of that code, that warrant process that I talked about earlier, and you have a track of land that's larger than 3.4 acres, what you do is you develop a neighborhood regulating plan, especially if your zoning's already established. When you develop that neighborhood regulating plan, if it is different, if it doesn't follow the block links, if it doesn't follow the street types, if it doesn't follow the building types, things of that nature, you get to bring it to council for approval. It doesn't take the step out of the process. What it does, you still have to go through the step, you still have to look at the drainage, you still have to make sure your idea works. And it does put a lot of focus on knowing what you want to do early on in the process. You are required to understand what you want to do with the property that you decide to develop. And then once you've decided, we bring it here for council to, to review and approve. And that's, that's just like you saw, for example, the Veridian Development, which is coming on tomorrow, sorry, I was going to say on the next meeting, but it's tomorrow. They did the exact. They did the exact same thing. They followed the intent of the code with the 720 block structure, which is allowed in the ETJ. They maneuvered their roads, and they're more curvilinear based on whatever geographic sensitivity was there. And we think we're going to bring you back a good product, a better product, that's more sustainable for you to review and approve in a development agreement. And that's kind of the goal, is if we can't get to that point at an administrative level, then we bring it to council, and council gets to approve and ask some of those tough questions if we don't get to. Yes, sir.
Okay. So if our strategic action item for the BEDC was to streamline the permitting process and creating an internal culture of yes, I guess I'm having a little bit of difficulty of seeing how what's on the right-hand side answers the question that's on the left-hand side.
Right. I don't know that it does. The question was, do we have a one-stop permitting shop? I would say absolutely. And these are the things that got it that way. Does it, is it a culture of yes? Absolutely, as long as you don't mind going through the process to bring it forward. We never say no, we say, here's the next step. And what we didn't want to do is water down development standards for anything. That's the goal. The goal here is absolutely say yes, but there has to be some type of standard. And that's a policy discussion that probably, that's why we just allocated an hour for this section, because we knew it was going to be a big discussion. Matter of fact, we're right on time, if anybody wants to know. And this is a big topic. That's why we brought it up here. There are conflicts in our process from time to time, based on what you're targeting. So, and we're going to talk about that a little bit later. But if you're targeting a certain market and it doesn't fit, we should have that discussion. I mean, that is truly the point of this meeting. We can talk a little bit about the development process itself. What I think is extremely helpful, really, this is just to denote where the green stuff is, and what it says is there's pre-application. So in green is where we should be aligned at the start of the development process, right? So if you receive, so this is where I believe, at a staff level, we should be aligned all the time. If there's a, if you receive an inquiry at the EDC level, let's push it straight to the development coordinator. We'll schedule a pre-application meeting. We'd like you to be involved in that pre-application meeting. We want you to be in that pre-application meeting. If you're out telling your story, which is another strategic objective, and you've got a targeted development that you're ready to move forward, as soon as they're ready, let's move them into the development coordinator meeting. And let's all sit down together, let's all do some pre-application work, and not get so far down the road, because I think that causes us trouble. We'll talk a little bit about that later. But this is the point for us to be aligned at the beginning, truly at the beginning. I think here's our best and quickest opportunity, and that's what this is supposed to represent. And again, it's all pre-application. You have something you want to say?
Can I just ask a quick question here? On the pre-application process, who's involved in that discussion? Are all the stakeholders at the table in order to work through any, to troubleshoot anything in advance?
Sure. So I think there are some confusion that happens a lot. There are two types of meetings. There are a pre-application meeting, which means you have no idea what you want to do, but you want to do some feasibility. You want to kick the tires on a piece of property, if you will. And a lot of times, they come in and have no clue of what they want. So I think at that point, the EDC is sitting in the chair next to us, and if it's something that you're not interested in or targeted into, you just provide resources. So I think all the stakeholders are there. Answer your question, I'm always there. Jennifer's usually there. The engineer, a lot of times, is there. If we need, we have a little more information, then we'll bring additional people. But a lot of time at a pre-application meeting, it's so high-level that we don't have the information that we need to know who to invite. Now, at a pre-development level, when people start to put together some sketches and they've got some ideas, that's when we bring in the fire department, or the police department, or the engineering department, or whoever needs to be involved, so that we can understand and start pointing out where we think there'll be issues in the process.
So the development meeting has all the stakeholders at the table, so they're not coming back to meet with the fire department, then coming back to meet with, it's like a one-stop shop at that development. Everybody's at the table.
That's correct. If we have, if we understand where you're headed, absolutely. It's not, like I said, just to have an idea in my head, not everyone is there. That's correct.
And when, if you back up and you kind of take a look at the slide before, and we're talking about MyGov or MyGov, I don't know any system that does it all, because there's always that customer service element that you have to add.
Sure.
I understand that MyGov is not necessarily a user-friendly, it's a little bit cumbersome. You're even still learning how to work that. What can we do to make those initial steps a little bit easier, so that a person looks forward to their development, as opposed to walk away from their development?
Sure. I'll go back to this slide. When you receive an inquiry, once you put them in touch with that development coordinator, she will absolutely call you back, she will invite you in, she will sit down with you at that computer if she has to, that's in the outside of the building, outside of the actual office, sorry, it's in the building, and help you enter whatever you need to do. She will sit down and walk you through the process step by step. I think we have a very customer-centric approach. I spent no less than three hours every Thursday with a different customer, easy. We sit down, we go through their process, what they're looking for. There's several people there. I think we're customer-friendly, at least that's what we'd like to be. I do understand that it's not, you can just walk in and get your permit, but you still have to do it from the computer kiosk. And that was a policy decision, so that we would have things and the ability to track and hold not only us accountable, but the developer as well. So if you can come in and slide something under the door, that doesn't necessarily work. We have to start a tracking process at some point, and that's the purpose of why we have it. It's not, not to be cumbersome, it's really just operational efficiency, which again, is another focus area.
I do think it's essential to have a tool. I also think it's essential to have the conviviality, the customer, the touch. We want them all to walk away with a pleasant experience. I think the tool will streamline, keep track of, but it's not the same as a person. So the combination is, for me, a winner.
Right. And I will say, you're still welcome to call, you're welcome to stop by. Again, I answer at least a dozen or more emails a week, and a lot, nine times out of 10, I'll send that person an email back, and I'll copy Ms. Viviana and say, she's going to go ahead and schedule you a meeting, thanks for being interested. But a lot of this personal touch, I think, went away during the pandemic, too. And there was a lot more online meetings, which we, previously, all the meetings were in person. But now, we have, we're open for business, and we're ready to help. This is the kind of stuff that happens at a pre-application meeting?
Trey?
Yes, sir.
Do you think that the city needs more shepherds?
I don't.
To help people through the process? One of the thoughts that I had was, could the EDC, you know, have more staff on our side to partner, you know, bringing the customer and making sure they have a good experience with the city? And help be the shepherd to get through the process?
I think that, I think that was the purpose of the MyGov, to be more efficient and add more online activities, so that we, so that we, do we need a cradle-to-grave approach for certain people that don't want to use things that are online? Absolutely. Should we always try to improve that?
No, I'm not even talking IT. I'm just talking, my vision would be that somebody in the EDC, a staff person, brings in the project, works with both sides, and sees where conflicts might be coming to fruition, and tries to make sure that those conflicts get eliminated and solutioned.
Right.
Not IT-related.
No, I understand. And again, I'll go back to this slide, I do think it should help. And it's, and I'll talk about this a little bit later, actually, in the presentation, but there's an opportunity for us to meet at a staff level more often and collaborate and share. And that's really, I think, the goal of the entire meeting here, is let's collaborate a little more.
Let me ask Sam's question a different way. If Sam had some preliminary drawings and he needed a pre-development meeting, when would he, if he called you tomorrow morning, when can he expect that pre-development meeting to be scheduled?
We would schedule this that day.
No, no. So will he meet this Thursday, next Thursday, Five Thursday? How, do we have a backlog?
It's generally no more than two weeks out. That's the case at the moment.
Okay, so two weeks out, today's the 12th, so if we call you on the 13th, they're going to meet on the 14th or the 21st?
Correct.
And I think that's, 15th or 22nd, yeah. Can't add seven. But I think that's part of what we're kind of getting to, is how backed up are we? And Councilmember Rogers, I know you have specifically asked the question during some quarterly reports of, it's great that we say we approved 27 permits, but how many, how many are pending approval? How many are stacked up in the pile? Because that's a part of being able to see what the throughput is. And we can't answer those kind of questions if it's not entered in MyGov, right? So, you know, there's a little bit of cat and mouse. But is that part of what you're at? How long does it take to start things going?
No, it's more like, when you're going through the process and all of a sudden there's an issue, and you're trying to figure out, how do I get through the issue without going to the mayor?
Yeah, that's a big one, because what Trey's describing right now doesn't happen like that. At least as far as the majority of the community, their responses, it doesn't happen like that. It's not a, it's not a positive flow through the permitting process at all.
And my thought was that the EDC could have, I mean, we have a small staff.
Yeah.
But we have money, and if we could hire another person on the staff, and their whole role was to take the project from cradle to grave, and work with the city, and make it happen, and when there's a problem, that person has the experience and knows all the different people to help kind of shepherd it through.
And a lot of cities do that.
Not to, not to take over the city's responsibility, but to just make sure that this new, this new company who's coming to Bastrop has a positive experience about the process, and doesn't, you know, oh, we're kind of too far into this now, we're going to do it, but I'm sure we're not going to tell the next person to do it, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah. I think it'd be a great idea, if there's some way we could add a staff person, whether it's BEDC or the city staff, I think that our staff is overwhelmed already, and that, not that they're not all working as hard as they can, but there's just too much. And it's not, it doesn't go fast enough, and it's just not efficient. And it's just going to get worse, because the building hasn't even started here yet.
Okay, so you're, in one essence, trying to answer the question that I asked about the streamlining, right? Because that's what we are trying to do, have a much better customer experience, so that people will want to have a good experience in doing business with us. So what you're talking about is actually answering the question of getting a better streamlined process, whether it's on, as Sam said, a shepherd on our side or having another staff. I mean, I think it's a great idea.
And I think that, I think everybody's working towards a more streamlined process, and it is a more streamlined process by adding MyGov, where you can actually see the progress of where your project is. But it takes away, when you add MyGov in, it takes away the person, personal piece of it. And if you had somebody walking through maybe the big projects and just walk those people through, and help with the questions, you know, is this thing been abandoned for more than six months, so I got to start the project all over again? Or can I get my sewer line accepted the way it is? And just find out all those things prior to going through the denial process, where you don't get a partial approval and then a denial, and a partial approval and a denial, and have to keep going over and over and over again. That's real aggravating for the developers. And that's what's happening here, or what's happened here, whether it was just by coincidence or just, you know, it's just bad, bad management of it, but it's, that's what's going on with our permitting process right now. I think MyGov will help fix it, where you can look at it and see exactly where it is, but it's still broken.
Well, I think there are two issues here. It's the takeaway and the way a person feels, if you're missing that customer service. But there's a time element. If a person knows it's going to take longer than they anticipated, it's not worth their time sometimes. So there's a time element that's very critical in the streamlining process, not just the good feeling you get that you came to Bastrop and this is where you want to build and stay.
Yeah, because a developer, when they come here, they, every day is money lost for them, if they're not open, or their development's not being built, or a piece of property's not closing, or a house isn't selling. Every day that they're not selling a house is the day that they're losing money. So time's real critical for them, where if we can wait a week, or we take two weeks to get something done, that's two weeks from a developer's standpoint, that that's a lot of houses I could have built, or that's a lot of property I could have moved, or I could have opened up two more retail establishments and be generating income, to where we're just sitting on it and losing it in the permitting process.
It's also a loss of revenue to the city with all of that economic activity that that, whatever that development is, even if it's just a house, you know, the people who live in that house are going to be spending money here. So there's, you know, all of that is not only costing the developer money, which of course, it's costing them the most money, and sometimes a developer is just a person wanting to build a house, we have to remember. I think we talk about them, developers as, you know, these big giant resource-filled, empty, bottomless, you know, pits of money. And most of the time, they're just people like, you know, like anybody else, you know, trying to make something work. And, but every day that the city, every day that we, that we don't get the permit done, every day that, you know, before they open, before they move into the house, before they do whatever, every day that goes by unnecessarily is money, obviously money lost to the developer, to the homeowner, to, you know, business owner, whatever. But it's also money lost to the city, and I think we forget that sometimes. It's sales tax, it's property tax. If we go past January 1st, well, there's a whole year of ad verum tax we don't get. So it's, it's all that.
Yeah. What our problem is right now is people are moving or wanting to develop out of the EDJ and move into the county versus coming to the city. So what it's going to do is it's going to cost the city a lot of money from property tax, and the people may still come here to spend their money that live on the outside and come in, so we'll get it through the sales tax. But we're losing a lot of property tax, because they're just going out to the county to build, because they don't have to go through the bureaucracy.
The other thing we need to be aware of is, there's not tons of large acreage available inside the city limits.
That's right.
And we don't have the annexation powers that we had before. And I am not saying that we shouldn't be taking every opportunity, and Kevin, I think the most important word that you said was unnecessarily. Because I don't think anybody sitting around here, I know without looking, so I'm not looking in anybody's eye, we are not saying, we want to blow off the fire code, we want to blow off the building code, we want the sewer line to leak. That's not what anybody's saying. But sometimes, some developers do want to cut corners. And they want to cut corners because that helps them make money. And when you're in the public, and you're in the community, and you buy the house, your assumption is, it's going to be safe, the water heater's not going to blow up, the water line's not going to start leaking. So, you know, like, welcome to our world, right? That's the, that's the two masters that we're trying to serve. So I want to step back to city manager, what do you think of the idea? And I was kind of thinking, and y'all can say, well, you're wrong, the really big projects tend to get the help and the visibility. It's the, not the really big project, you know, if it's a water heater replacement, that probably goes through without much trouble. But maybe, maybe in BEDC, maybe it's specialized, we get somebody that's more specialized on commercial, or midsize, or smaller size, because we don't have tons of 200-acre tracts inside the city limits. A lot of our stuff is, it's a really big lot, and I'm going to subdivide it with my family, and make two lots and build two houses, and now I'm a developer, oh my God, I've never developed anything, and why is it so hard? You know, and maybe that's the people that we need to be shepherding. So Mr. Hoffman, since we're talking a lot about your staff, I thought I'd give you a chance.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. And to respond to the question that, or the suggestion that Mr. Keer made, I, for whatever's worth, I absolutely think it's appropriate for EDC staff. Not up to me to decide how much staff you need for this, but... much staff you need for this, but absolutely appropriate for EDC staff to play a role of assisting applicants through the process and holding the process accountable. I think that's completely appropriate. It would also be my opinion, though, that that, there's a line that wouldn't be crossed or shouldn't be crossed. Helping navigate the process is one thing.
Yeah, we don't establish process, we don't establish procedure.
Okay. And I was going to say, or advocating for a particular outcome wouldn't be so appropriate, in my opinion, but shepherding, to use your word, the applicant through the process, which can be complicated, that's absolutely appropriate, and we would welcome that. And I think to some extent that that role gets played today, and I think that works. I'll repeat something Trey has said a couple of times, and I think I actually said in the opening comments, key to success here is a lot of communication at the staff level. That hasn't always been the case. I think we're, with a brand-new future in front of us, I think that absolutely will be the case moving forward, and I think that will, I think that will help. And if I might, Mayor, respond just briefly to, and I'll keep it brief, to some of the other comments and suggestions that have been made. I've been here for just about a year now, and I think something that people hear me say a lot is that I take every complaint and concern that comes to my attention, and there have been quite a few of them, I take them very, very seriously and try to evaluate, excuse me, what's going on there and what it is the city could be doing differently or better to prevent that bad feeling in the first place. And the vast majority of the time, the issue isn't so much about the process, it is, we have applicants, both large developers and smaller property owners who wanna do something simple, who really do object to the policy objectives that we're trying to carry out. I'm going to say, hopefully not sounding defensive here, that in my observation, just trying to look at this in an unbiased way, we do a pretty good job with the customer service part. We knew going into implementing my gov that that was going to be very different for a lot of the people who affect the process every day. It has taken a lot of getting used to, I'll admit that it, I think if we had to do all over again, frankly, that we would've taken a bit more time to do that backend process workflow work before we rolled the system out. That's water under the bridge. We rolled the system out while we were still working through some process improvements, that's really no one's fault, but the customer service ethic is absolutely there. We absolutely will take you by the hand, whether you're a big developer or a small mom and pop, and we will take all the time you need to work through the system. I've seen that happen every week since I've been here. It's, and there's nothing efficient about it, but we will absolutely do that. I think we have a, I think we have a communication problem. I think there is absolutely a negative narrative out there about what it takes to do development in the city of Bastrop. I think there is obviously things we can do better. We heard a lot of those things on June 30th when we had a contractors forum in this room, and we're going to very positively respond to all those things. But a lot of what we heard on June 30th, and we continue to hear, is about, very frankly, is people who are trying to cut corners, thank you for that comment, Mayor, yes, I think there are people who would prefer to build in the county and not the city because the development standards are different in the county. You know what? My approach is to celebrate that. You're gonna get a better product in the city. I know, speaking as the city manager, but we have building codes for a reason, and that's a difference between every city and every Texas county. And yeah, I've heard this too, I think people would prefer to build in the county sometimes for that very reason.
Well, I think, I don't think anybody's accusing staff of cussing people out. You can be really sweet, but it's three weeks later and they're still mad they don't have their permit. I think it's part of the problem.
And we, and I know council has asked some questions about my gov, and I'm looking forward to providing all of that.
Great.
Of course, we're not cussing anybody out, but the reason, one of the things that, one of our objectives in this communication effort is the city can't be the applicant's design consultant.
Right.
And I'm not making this up, and I know we're going to prove this, very often, that's exactly the role we are asked to play. I've been managing development processes my whole career, and that dynamic is frankly very different in Bastrop. We are asked to be a developer's design consultant.
Yeah, they'll say, just draw me something that you'll approve. Well, it doesn't really work that way.
And we can't do that. We can help, we can walk, and we can get better at helping people understand what their alternatives are, but I am not exaggerating how often that comes. And so then there's not an application. And I'll get a call from the mayor, well, Joe Citizen says, and we heard some of this, frankly, on June 30th, they've been dealing with the city for two years. Okay, there is not a single application. That clock hasn't actually started. What's going on is they haven't heard us say yet that they can do something that the code clearly says they can't do. Mr. Jobe is really good at and really practiced at, and so is Ms. Bills, talking about that how-to-do-different thing that he talks about. And yeah, we'll send it to the PMZ or the city council or the ZBA, whatever the right path is, given the, what's being applied for and the variance that they want from that. Very often, that opportunity isn't taken by the applicant because they're not sure of that outcome. Again, that's policy, that has nothing to do with the permit process.
But the shepherding, particularly if they worked in the EDC, they could start shepherding from the day they walked in.
We'd welcome that.
And then it's tracked ahead of the permitting. Councilmember Rogers, I think you were wanting to say, make a comment.
I think I forgot what I wanted to say.
I'm so sorry. We should jump in.
I think a little bit about what Sam's trying to say is, or at least what I'm thinking, is the language barrier. You guys, I mean, we have our own, Sam can talk numbers and put me to sleep, and I won't understand. So maybe somebody at BEDC or whichever would understand my gov, so when this, when the person has a problem, they understand that terminology, that maybe would help them. The other thing that I'm not sure, that I don't see anywhere in here, is let's say I'm going to this pre-application meeting, does anywhere in here, do you tell the average person, like Kevin was saying, if I'm just the person building a house, my first house, I might not realize how long it's gonna take before I can get a house permit? There's a lot of steps. I mean, do they, is there a way they know, well, okay, we're gonna meet here, but by the time you go here, 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 it's gonna be a year?
Would you show us some examples of how we can lay all of that?
I'm just asking, as a question. You do give them that answer.
Yes, that's absolutely next.
Okay. So I'm saying that might, if they weren't getting the answer, that might be why they're just, they're...
Setting expectations.
Right. Their perception of what's going on. You gotta realize that big developers know what they're doing, hopefully, but the average person is just building, they don't know, they've never done this. So to you, it's really easy. All you're gonna do is answer this question, fill that out, and I'll tell you how to make chocolate really fast, and you're gonna be confused. So it's real important that we understand who's applying and their perspective of what's happening. And I think that's what happens, is that for the planning department, all this is secondhand, they've done it every day, they do it all day long. It was a process just to get a sign permit, which I thought, yes, I did, but it was hard for me to understand the language through my gov, even though I've gotten sign permits before. So I think that's where the miscommunication, the shepherd, is just understanding what you're asking, because you're asking in a term, your terms, and we gotta put it where everybody else can understand what those terms are. So I think that would be helpful to have that person that could tell you, okay, is that where you're at?
Put it in the budget.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
I'm having, I just would like to understand from the council's perspective what the vision is of Bastrop. I'm trying to put my arms around it. Is Bastrop gonna be, I mean, Elon's buying everything? Is he gonna be putting a tunnel instead of a bridge? I don't know, I don't know. But what does Bastrop look like with Austin rushing in? Does Bastrop look like Cedar Park, where it's just like six-lane highways or all the way, you know, all the way around, and you annex it and you keep growing and growing? Or does Bastrop stay this little nucleus of two-lane roads, and all these six-lane roads just kinda venture out of Bastrop? You know, they come from Austin, and all the businesses are gonna grow in the county and not in the city. I'm just trying to picture what the EDC is supposed to be working on. You know, I'm in Cedar Park now, you know, I'm in a...
Well, Sam, one thing to realize is that Cedar Park looks like it does because it was developed at a time when cities were annexing and had annexation ability.
Yeah, that's what I don't understand.
And they were grabbing land as fast as they could. We have zero ability to do that. The legislature took that away.
Okay, so you're limited by its size.
We are, the only way we add to the square footage of the city is if someone who buys property wants to be a part of the city. And they voluntarily annex.
Thank you.
And so then it gets to the, why would anyone want to voluntarily annex? Generally, it's because they are looking for utilities.
Mm-hmm.
And/or they're looking for services. And/or, and I know Charlie's gonna nod his head yes, even though I can't see him behind me, if they are looking for any sort of incentives at all, they have to be a part of the city.
Right.
You can't get a BEDC incentive if you are not within the city limits, correct?
He's not nodding.
Uh-oh. It must be a longer answer than yes.
Well, the answer is they can, but the city council must approve it, according to the statute.
And I'm speaking for city council, we have a really hard time explaining to our city taxpayers why we are sending their tax dollars to someone who is not paying city taxes. Right?
Well, yeah.
And I'm not saying it couldn't be the right deal, you know, but in general, that's how that works.
Yeah.
Correct, council?
Okay, thank you.
Doc, I think you were trying to say something as well.
Well, I did have some thoughts on what Sam was saying about the shepherd, you know, the shepherdship or whatever, and I kinda liked the idea, but I was thinking, you know, if the EDC really wants to help with that, maybe they could contribute toward the staff that would still be with the city, but they would fund the staff member, and then that way, that would be working in conjunction with the staff that's already working on this, and they'd have a better understanding, and possibly they'd be able to connect a little bit easier than someone from EDC coming to work with the city in that sense. Although we do wanna partner and work together, I think the funding aspect would be probably good. And that way, we would get some things done, and that would add on to our staff in that sense. And it would still be economically feasible for EDC to do that because it would be future, it would be working toward our future economic development in that sense also. And as the mayor was saying earlier, you know, the fact that we don't have that capability of doing annexation and the fact that there just aren't that many large tracts of land within the city limits, that is true. I mean, I know a few years ago, there were some other pieces of property, but they still weren't that large, there just aren't that many, and we're kinda limited in that, and now that we can't really annex unless it's voluntary, that makes it a little bit more difficult, so. And as the city manager said, if people wanna go out into the county and do that, that's fine too, but we really need to try to keep control over the area that we have and make sure that the rules are followed with the zoning and the different things like that that are important, and having a quality development, and making sure that our citizens get, when they do get a product or when they do get a development or a home or something, it does function properly and no corners have been cut or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I hear about comments about people cutting corners, but I wanna make it very clear that once you start discounting people's comments that they're cutting corners and going to the county, you're already undermining your own opportunity to improve yourselves. And I think that's a wrong approach to take because it's already providing excuses for why things are the way they are, and I don't believe that's true. Secondly, the first time I ever heard numbers was from the mayor, where she commented on the number of permits, but we don't know the number of backlog permits. If you wanna improve something in life, you need to measure it, so you know where you are and where you wanna go, and you gotta have a target. And at this point, having used my gov, having gone through my gov, having gone through these systems, haven't heard anything yet about KPI, key performance indicators, haven't seen any demonstration on any of the metrics and how the city is actually using that system in terms of metrics and improvements in order to achieve a faster, a better, a more complete process moving forward. Because right now, my gov is painful to begin with, it's painful as a user, I'm sure it's painful as an employee using it as well, as it seems like both the user and the employees of the city are learning at the same time, getting things done. But KPIs are key to improving, and I would really look forward to see improvements on monitoring, measuring, and key performance indicators, even having targets to deliver, you know, the dates to having something complete, the number of pending items, standard business engineering practices could really be applied here, I believe.
So, I appreciate that so much. Not trying to imply that every person who goes to the county is only going there to cut corners, not trying to imply that at all. And to your point, if right now it's taking four days to get a water heater permit, then we should be trying to be at two days. You know, everything should always be trying to continuously improve, so I appreciate that very, very much.
Or three and a half weeks or so for a gas meter, yeah.
So Charlie, this is a clarifying question. Can we, in our statute, hire a city employee?
Let me back up and give a broader answer and then a more specific answer. Again, you're limited to the use of the funds with respect to what the statute gives you authority to do. The area where you might be able to do this is under chapter 505, dot 158, that says you can make expenditures, it says specifically expenditures, that promote new or expanded business enterprises. And to the extent you're spending funds on an employee that you can, you could fund an employee for the city, so long as that employee's duties and responsibilities were limited to, and I'm gonna use the shepherding as the example, shepherding projects that are expanding new or existing, expanding existing businesses within the community. I believe you could absolutely do that. But what you couldn't do is fund a shepherd who is shepherding the example that the mayor gave, which is, I've got a piece of property, I'm dividing that piece of property into two, and I'm gonna build a house on each one, and I don't know how to do that, can you help me? We couldn't do that. But I absolutely believe you could assist in funding an employee to help shepherdize those new business projects that are coming to town, or an individual business who is trying to expand their business in town. I think that would absolutely be allowable under the statute.
If I could make a recommendation on that, I mean, I think it would be fairly easy and very doable to hire another staff person for BEDC to do exactly what we were talking about, but on the other side of the coin, and maybe you have it, and I just don't know it, okay? But do you guys have some kind of a playbook that shows timelines and the steps necessary to go through the development process, whether it's a homeowner that wants to do what you're talking about, or it's a commercial activity wants to do it?
Paul's pointing at the thing, and I think they're like, if y'all give us a chance, we've got some of this stuff. I know they have a map of all the developable pieces of property within the city limits, so are y'all saying, yes, you've got some of that stuff?
Yeah, and I think there's an opportunity to make more. So that's kinda what we're gonna...
So that's kinda what we're gonna get to again. I think the real goal of this slide was to say, we should meet at the first, at the head of the, during the pre-application, when this first starts, this is the first opportunity to collaborate, whether that be through a new commercial development coordinator or whatever we wanna call it. And that's what I wrote down, so there we go. And so on and so forth. And again, I think this is what's happened. I think we understand what happens there. We respond to questions and things of that nature, but let's get to the process itself.
So before we move on, because that was a really in-depth conversation, can we say that we're giving an action item to Paul and Janora to have a conversation and that that's something that we would either consider in an EDC budget or Paul and Janora might work out who a person reported to and what that would look like that would be legal? Is that something that we all want to pursue or you do not want to pursue that?
Well, I think we have a strategy meeting coming up and I think we can discuss it more in detail when we do that on the 26th. I think it's something everybody's interested in digging deeper on.
I'm looking at my council because if they say no, it won't matter what y'all think. That's why I'm wanting them to say, are you guys, is that something that you would support? Okay.
I will say at this point that, like I said to Mr. Keer earlier, I think this makes a lot of sense and would be something I would welcome. But given what I understand that role of that person to be, I don't think it ought to be a city employee. It needs to, if it's going to be that outside entity holding the city accountable part, it shouldn't be a city employee. If the outcome is targeted to what Mr. Zek just said would be more legally appropriate, it shouldn't be a city employee.
I agree with that as well.
I agree.
Okay. Okay, good. So that's one to do for our, and the floor is back to you, Mr. Job.
Sure. So the development process as a whole, you have in front of you again in a handout, and there should be a little bit clearer slide in there that talks about each step in the process. Some projects are a little longer. Again, you'll see it in your handout as much, there's a whole page in there. Yeah, that's it. But it looks a lot like this, right? So the point of this is, point of this slide is, depending on where you start is how long it takes for you to develop. For example, the Walk of Fame project or the Bastrop 552, if you wanna talk about, those folks had a development agreement that they were interested in, the new movie studio, right? The average timeline for that is 120 days. And what we'd like to see, we did that in 84 days. I think it would've been two weeks earlier if we wouldn't have tabled it. So I'm not gonna take all the blame, but it was 84 days.
We wouldn't have tabled it if it had been complete. So don't play that game with us, Mr. Job.
Still under the 100 days. So again, annexation, that's another 120 days. So if they'd agreed to be annexed, that's a step in the process, about 120 days. And the reason for that is there's public hearings, there's notifications required, some stuff in the state law that we just can't get around, and that takes a lot of time. But I think it's important to note, if you'll look at the different colors, the yellowish color there, the annexation and that zoning concept scheme, when you establish your zoning, can be done concurrently. So those can be done together. So while the maximum time it would take if you do those together is the 120 days. And again, a lot of that has to do with timing and state law. And not everybody, if you look at the next process, the preliminary infrastructure, the preliminary drainage, preliminary plating, a lot of folks only wanna get to a preliminary plating level, right? They don't wanna go to the final drainage plan. So again, these processes are broken down based off of House Bill 3167 to give us enough time to make sure that we can review these. I will say that, just on a note, we talked a lot, and I would encourage everybody to look at the next quarterly meeting or the next meeting we get the quarterly report, you will see that the permitting and the inspections has went from 2,500 last quarter to 5,000. We've never slowed down in that turnaround. We've hired a lot of third-party folks to make sure that's moving. So again, we went from 2,500 to 5,000 over the next quarter and again, the turnaround time is still the same. Usually home, seven days and everything else 14. Again, a lot of that has to do with the submittal of the applicant. You'll notice that's highlighted in this slide. It depends on completeness. If you're right, if we need somebody to help people liaison and get things complete, that would probably speed the process up quite a bit. That's generally the job of your engineer or your contractor, but if we wanna focus on an in-house development coordinator that does that, great, that's three votes and I'm your boy. So we'll do whatever you want. This process also is the next up on our to-be revised. We talked about this as we were elevating the development process and the B3 codes. First, we worked on signs because that was the most important. We all remember that conversation a couple months ago. This is actually next. So we'll start talking about how we make this a little smoother, how we make this a little faster. There were just, we were trying to stop the bleeding, if you will, and signs was the big important issue at the moment. Now that's taken care of, this is one of the things that are coming next. And again, while it says 30 days, you can run those colors concurrently. So again, the annexation zoning to be together, anything preliminary can be done together, the final public improvement plans can be done together. Where you slow down again, still 30 days is the final plat that has to go for approval at a board level. Site development plan again is done here and then building permits. And a lot of times folks use permit just as one big word and there's a lot, I mean a lot, of different permits. You say, I've been getting permits for a year and a half. Well, sometimes you just received, what you got was a zoning concept plan approved. It's not technically a permit, but I will say the turnaround for the average permit is pretty quick. But again, if you wanna have some more discussion about this, happy to do so. But I think our big takeaway is here's our opportunity to, go ahead.
I'm just curious. I'm not gonna do the math, but what's the, let's everything, all the stars are aligned. What is your quickest, how many days does it turn around?
250.
And you can do things concurrently. What is your fastest total day?
What are we turning around? A house permit, seven days, house review? A subdivision, each one of these steps take that 30-day period? It depends. That's what I mean, the question is, how long does it take? I'll ask you, what would you like, what do you like the answer to? I'm happy to help you.
The key is the asterisk that's there. The asterisk is there is only the city's time occupying that. And some of these are congruent steps. So it bakes in the city for 30 days and then it spits out or 20 days or whatever, it spits back out. And now as a developer, you gotta capture those comments and then re-thrash them again. And the number of time you gotta turn drawings in, seven, eight, 10 times to put a comment on a drawing because it's an action point. And then, well, now it's another comment on a drawing, it's another drawing, it's another action point and then it goes back again. So this is not even a project plan. This is just city cooking time of the development. And that's when you start looking at that and that's where the trouble begins, when you look at something this much time on the schedule and that's not even project time.
Right, so that's the...
In all fairness, Bill, any city you go to, somebody's gonna have to design your project.
I understand it. What Catherine was looking at is if you sum up this time, Trey and the city...
It's not the total time of the project.
Trey and City can only sum up the city cooking time.
Correct.
What they can't sum up is what is the developer's time to address those issues that come in and out of this?
Right.
So you already see that, you look at this, this is beyond a year and it's looking more than a year and a half or two years.
And we get comments all the time that engineers and surveyors are two to three months behind because of the level of work in the area, but that's something we can't control.
Right. So they're two different things.
But part of what Bill and Trey are saying is, it's not like you just add up every single one of those numbers because each project is a little bit different. Sometimes the same developer that gets the final plat's not the developer that's turning in the site plan.
Correct.
So you're in different spots.
But if you took the sum of each, some of the white, if you did the worst case, 120, 120, 30, 30, 60, and 30, you get the cooking time in the city, you know, which is just one of color of each block, you know, concurrent. And by the time you finish that, 120 and 120 is 240 and another 100, that's 340. You've just got one full year of city cooking time on this example. And trust me, based on the money we're spending on engineering and development and work and rework, those guys are spending a lot of money and time getting stuff for that too. So I mean, that's, it's much longer than what's...
So one of the things that I think would be an advantage of the shepherd because every, I would like to go at it that the developer's trying to do the best job they can, the engineer's trying to do the best job they can, the people who work at the city are trying to do the best job they can, right? But then there's the human factor. And the developer calls me and I'm an engineer and I got 27 projects and the developer says to me, hey, where's my so-and-so project? You know what's the easy engineer answer? I am waiting on the city. So part of the metrics that we need to keep up with, and one of the things you said that really, really bothers me, and I've lived on both sides of it, if I've told you here are the four notes that you need on your final plat and your engineer gives it back to me and they only have one of those notes, is that now you're, as a developer, you don't really care whether the city cot that you only turned in one, whether you're in, or you're, you don't care where the problem is, it's adding to the time. But I think we as the city need to keep up with, we've made our comments, you've addressed those comments, and unless you've changed something substantially, we shouldn't be coming up with a new set of comments. And I think that's what you're implying. I did everything you asked and now you're asking me to do some more. So I think that's something we ought to keep track of because I fear, because nobody's perfect, that may have happened because people are human and they may have missed something, but we also have the, I told you the four things to change and you changed one of them and now you're getting the plans back. And that's not a, the city of Bastrop's horrible to deal with, that's a, everybody's trying to do too much work and they didn't do all of the things they were supposed to do. But we gotta be able to differentiate that and I feel like that's where the shepherd kicks in. And the shepherd can say to the developer, well, your engineer, I checked my gov and your engineer hasn't addressed comments. I've checked my gov and you're right, the city's comments were due yesterday, I am on it and you will have answers by noon tomorrow. And I think that's what you guys are talking about, is somebody, and Mr. Hoffman, you talked about it in the idea of looking out, really kind of a third party, keeping everybody honest, for lack of a better term, because I'm not trying to imply that people are dishonest.
And that's part of the personal piece of it that comes back into it.
Now there's a person.
Because now you have a third person saying, you need to get this to us, they've already sent it to you twice or whatever. You have somebody that's telling them that versus trying to find it on the computer screen and see where it's at or what it's doing.
And ideally, someone that says, you've sent it in twice and you still haven't addressed the first comment that we gave you the first time around, right?
Yeah, because all the stuff that you just said happens all the time.
All the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, nobody's perfect. Doc, were you wanting to say something?
No, and I was gonna say, and a lot of times, I mean, I'm not trying to make excuses for the city or anything like that, but you know, the legislature has done some things to us that have caused us to have to go through certain hoops to make those things happen too as far as timelines. And then we also have the public hearings, the notices and things like that, and they can't happen overnight. They have certain timeframes that are available to that, so you have to keep those things in consideration also. Because with public hearings, they can't happen every week. I mean, they're on a time schedule the way we've set and we can do special ones, but a lot of that is on a certain time structure that has to be established. And what the legislature has done and is still trying to do to us as cities, it's making it even more difficult and cumbersome for us to try to deliver the services to the citizens because the legislature is making all these rules and things, but they don't have to follow through with them. They're putting us in an awkward situation as far as I'm concerned.
But it's for everybody, that's not just for Bastrop.
Yeah, that's not unique.
So you can't, you're exactly right, but if they can go to another city and then that time decreases, then they'll go to that other city to move their business there. That's what, I think that's what this whole discussion has been around.
To keep them wanting to come to Bastrop.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that's number one, why you hire a project manager to help with your construction projects so that you can get things done quicker. But I think what, I think the topic here is that if you kind of raise it up to maybe a little bit higher level, we're trying to make it easier for developers when they come in here, they can have a better experience and have it, I'm gonna use the word again because I still haven't heard an answer yet, but a more streamlined process where you hand them the book, whether it's in this format or something that you, it's more of a step-by-step thing that I would propose that you think about, but to give them the book of how to do it so they can understand it, whether it's a one-time person wanting to redo their home or if it's a big developer. But it's the whole experience and making it easier for them to understand so that they go, wow, you guys are great versus going to another city that we don't want them to go to.
As with any issue, you know, one must analyze, assess, plan, and then act. And to Sam and Bill's point is that's what we're identifying here is solutions to problems and how best to act upon this. Because we wanna minimize the confusion and misimpressions that are out there and optimize common expectations. Because oftentimes, y'all may have a certain expectation, council may have a certain expectation, the dead-gum developer, whether it's small or large, is gonna have a different expectation. We need to reach some commonality in those issues. That's why I appreciate the comments about the KPI. I think that's an important factor.
And if I can speak to process just for a minute, any, you pick a project, again, that's what my gov helps us do, is track that and see where the stalls were. But a lot of the stuff you're talking about, the extra steps, again, that's why you guys are here is that policy discussion. Because you may need a COA if you're downtown, that takes extra time. There's only a meeting once a month. Now, you can't get your permit within 14 days because you need a COA. That's just one example. There are multiple things like that in the process. So our policy direction at a city level, and I think I understand it okay, is to manage growth. We wanna control how you interact with the public realm. We wanna keep it authentic to Bastrop, right? That's that block structure I talked about, how you interact, is your build-to-lines, things of that nature, your glazing. Remember, we went downtown and extracted that DNA from every building, every block structure that was authentic to Bastrop. And the policy direction we were given was to apply that. That's all we were doing. And that doing different step has uncertainty, just like we talked about earlier. If you're a developer and you've come in, whether it's large or small, we say, you have to take this to council for approval or ZBA or whatever the approach is, there's a chance they're gonna get a no, and they did a lot of work. And that is designed that way from a policy standpoint. And if that's something we wanna fix, we just need to have that discussion.
And that might be part of the answer to the question Mr. Keer asked earlier about the city's vision. From Trey's standpoint, from my standpoint, from Jennifer's standpoint, the city's vision is articulated in that comprehensive plan and in those three really big-picture policy intents that really are at the crux of the issue here. I think everyone in the room wants processes to be continuously improved and measured and improved upon. But I think just from watching this every day and from the people in the room who actually do this every day, there is a set of subjects about why things take so long that is broader than process.
Yes.
And I think the more we spend time on this, the more that's going to become really, really clear. I'm very confident of that.
So again, this is probably one of the most important slides. I'd like to suggest some kind of bi-weekly development meeting with the staff, EDC staff, city staff. And from that, where we share leads and activities, we start developing and creating those pre-application meetings, whether it be some kind of targeted industry or if it's just somebody that calls, let us help you get that done. I heard you guys talk about bi-annual or quarterly meetings. I think all that's the right way to get that done. And that all leads to that managing growth. One of the last strategic goals was to tell the story. And this is, and I'll let Janora talk about this again, but this is the action items that came out of that. And really from a city standpoint, we just wanna, we just really wanna stand ready to help. So if we've got ideas here, you're gonna have more to discuss, here's the time to do it.
Well, in the strategic plan, it was talked about the website, redoing the website and then utilizing and enhancing social media, which the EDC has already done. I think y'all completed that relatively quickly and very effectively. I know it's one of the websites I've certainly looked at over the last few months and seen great improvement and I think it's very effective. Where we can partner with the city is through links and I believe that has also already been done. So I don't know where your conversation will go with the strategic planning process, but I believe that has already been accomplished and was quite early on.
I agree. I think it really ends up coming back to that policy discussion again. Kind of one of the stories we're telling again, some targeted outreach to, you know, Austin and San Antonio real estate developers and brokers. This is just kinda some of the things that we've done on the city staff's side. We talk about the B3 codes a lot. We've been to a couple international things. We've actually won a couple... won a couple awards, seeing you, the APA presentations, again, we present in-house so that staff understands it better. We've done Austin Real Estate Group, and then Jean actually has a couple items here. I'm happy to just let you look at them, or we can talk about them if you like. But again, this is some of the stuff that she's been doing, the targeted outreach, right? Some solutions online for the BDC and Career Day. Again, kind of the story we're telling, the Art Institute, provide connections to build that nine-day boot camp program certificate. And again, they've hosted best breakfasts, things of that nature. And all of that really gets us to, what story are we telling? Again, who do we want to attract? What are those targeted industries? And this is it. So this is what we have in your plan, and I guess the good thing to say is, come on.
Yeah.
You'll notice on my focus list that, and kind of the things that we as an organization have targeted and really looked at over the last year, has been more than just development. And it's important for you to understand that, because we, our focus as an EDC is not just bringing in a building to plop down in the community, we have to build all the functionality around that, meaning helping to develop workforce training programs and supporting those developments that are coming in from a workforce standpoint, as well as attracting educational opportunities that kind of coincide with that. So our list is a little bit broader in that sense, and that's why, because we do focus on a lot more than just plopping a building in Bastrop.
Jean, could you just go over some of these items and give a little bit of, as brief as you can?
Sure.
Tell a little bit about this, because y'all have a very, or the EDC has a very robust program and very thorough, and I have witnessed Jean in more than one situation over the last two months, and she is very thorough when explaining our process and what the EDC does. And the Bastrop EDC is far more than incentives. In fact, incentives are not always discussed, and sometimes never discussed. We are much more, we are a resource to resources, and we do shepherd, a lot of those projects that come through the door are shepherded by the staff, and Jean is very good at shepherding those, and helping them find the resources they need that may not ever come to the city. They may go somewhere else in the community to develop, but they may never utilize some of the resources we've talked about here.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we do work with everything from the small-business owner who has never had a business before. We talk them through that process, we provide them with small-business resources beyond what we're capable internally. We try to make sure that they sit down and have conversations with the right types of people, so they get the right types of information. And, you know, sometimes it doesn't work, sometimes it does, it's not a good fit, maybe they're just way over, you know, the thought process of, because entrepreneurs typically have a really good visionary aspect, they don't understand the business process just yet. And so we try to wrangle them in and not let them get so far down the road where they're spending money and they don't really have a good game plan. And so we try to bring them back and walk them through that process and connect them with the right tools, as well as the large developers, you know, working with million-square-feet type opportunities, and really understanding what their project has to offer, as well as the impact that it will have on the community, not just from a bringing their business here, but from a physical impact, and trying to understand that. And when we do get to a point, depending on if the, if the project is confidential, if we as an organization have signed an NDA or confidentiality agreement in any form or fashion, we have to keep that information as close to the vest as we can, until they have given us permission to bring the city in from a development standpoint. And we try to tote that line very carefully, because there are times where I need information to be able to answer their questions, but they're not ready to physically speak with the city yet. And so typically, what I do is, I'll email Trey some general questions that are associated with the project, to make sure that from a wastewater perspective, or a water perspective, or development drainage perspective, can we help them? Can we support this type of project? And anybody outside of our industrial park, if they are inside the city limits and they are looking at a mixed-use type project, or a housing development project, I typically, by the end of my very first conversation with them, the very first thing I suggest you do is, one, go and look at all the codes, and, two, schedule a pre-application meeting with the City of Bastrop to fully understand what is required, what are processes, and if your project will fit in the City of Bastrop. And every one of my emails back, kind of follow-up with potential people coming into our community, is exactly that. I usually send them the codes, the pattern book, because it kind of sticks out, it really shows them what we're looking for, as well as the link to my gov to schedule the pre-application meeting. And so we do have a really good kind of circular process of how we're handling things, and we've been doing that for quite a while, well, since we implemented the new codes. And trying to tell that story on your behalf, again, whether it be a small business or a large business, and everything in between. And I believe in what you guys are trying to do, and so I try to help people understand that as well. And so I try to get them to you as quickly as I can, but sometimes, especially with the industrial projects, our big projects that we do work, I do, we have to keep them confidential, until they are ready to speak with the city directly. But I do ask questions to make sure that we're covering, and at certain points, especially when it comes to really important things like wastewater and water, I do try to get at least Trey involved as quickly as possible to get that connection. I'm not that person, I'm not a, I'm not a planning person or a construction management person, so I try to get the experts in to answer those questions. On the flip side of that, I want to go kind of the complete opposite direction, which is the educational aspect of it, the workforce development aspect. We have worked very, very hard as an organization over the last six and a half years to build programs for our community, since we do not have a community college in our community. We are very fortunate today, where we stand today as a community, to have the Art Institute of Austin in our community, their doors are officially open. Yay! And they are having physical classes again. They are also really going outside of kind of their core boundaries to look at Bastrop as a community and say, "How can we best fit and help?" And they are developing certificate programs specific to our community and our needs, not theirs, but ours. And I think that's important. Austin Community College is also, as we all know, we've been working on that project. We are hoping to define their exact start date in the next couple of weeks, I am meeting with them, and we're going to help define when that will actually take place. And again, I'll remind you that those three programs that we're gonna focus on at first are gonna be HVAC, welding, and plumbing. And I know everybody keeps screaming at me about electrical as well, because we're all desperate for them. We're just not quite there yet, we'll get there, that is a program that we are interested in. I think the other, the other thing that's extremely important for us to understand too, from an education standpoint, is our relationship with BISD. We, again, have been working very, very hard to build that relationship and have that partnership with them. And I, we have worked with them and supported them through some grant opportunities, and not from a financial funding standpoint, but just simply being, being a partner with them. And they have received a PTEC grant, which will allow them to implement some STEMS programs that will also support manufacturing academies. And they will be implementing that program at Cedar Creek High School. And that also may, fingers crossed, coincide with the Tesla manufacturing program as well. And so we're working really hard to kind of bring all of those programs, almost all at once, which is great. But we do so many different things in our office, and it's really fun, we get to engage with the community. But I do want the city council and the city staff to know that we do work very hard to do our part to make sure that we connect people when they need to be connected with you, to hear your side of the development process, because that is key. So I appreciate you letting me speak.
Yep. So yeah, there's already a lot of collaboration and cooperation, I agree. I think we always got a chance to improve. And again, telling the story, it's a great time, since you're fixing to review your strategic items.
Okay, so we've all been sitting here for two hours, how are we doing on the timeline?
Pretty close. Pretty close.
I was gonna suggest perhaps, you take a small break, and just a couple of slides.
Okay.
We're very close. Again, this is the current markets, our current targets, sorry. This is the question we were all asking a minute ago, what are we missing? You guys are gonna go back and do your strategic meeting here very soon, at the EDC level. There's been talk about, especially if it's among staff, workforce housing, right, we talked a little about affordable housing earlier, and we've talked about incubator space and entrepreneurship, how can we foster that, is that a goal? We don't really address that in, at a policy level. So again, something you guys can discuss. And with that, I'll move to the next slide, if nobody has a comment. These are areas of common ground, or so we can take a break.
Let's take a, oh, yeah, Ron says he's fine, what's wrong with y'all? Let's take it quick and know that the faster we get back, the faster we get done. Okay, Trey, I'm assuming that Paul's seen your presentation, so let's keep going, because I'm pretty sure he knows what you're gonna say.
He has seen it, and we're doing really good on time, I think the next section is to be finished at 7:50, so we're moving along very nicely. 2013, Tamaria's of Common Ground, some stuff that we've done together. In 2013, industrial park plan, this was phase one of that plan, it was actually done through a development agreement with the City of Bastrop. What that plan references is, once the phase one improvements are complete, pretty much that is over, unless we want to negotiate through a separate development agreement for phases two through six. And this is gonna be important when we talk about future customers that you have, and you got some people kind of you're talking to now, but what we don't have yet is that plan and how we want to move forward. So this is that policy gap we're gonna talk about. Again, so this was done in 2013, that was the first extension of Technology Drive, everything's been complete. But there's a new project coming up, and this is where Jean's actually gonna get up and speak, and it's Technology Drive Extension, and it resulted in a local agreement with the county. This is to give you a close-up view, so she has something to speak to.
So the Technology Drive Project has actually been a part of the BDC's focus since 28, or I'm sorry, August of 2017, and we have gone through numerous kind of revisions of this project over the years. It's been stalled, it's been brought back to life, it's been stalled again, due to just different things that have been going on. The majority of this project is going to be funded with a bond that was taken out specifically for infrastructure in the industrial park. And currently, right now, the project originally was funded for $1.6 million, and it's currently at $1.699,471, and year-to-date, we have spent $122,106.76. And this project will do numerous things for our industrial park. As you can see on the map that is up there, it will provide a piece of an extension on actual Technology Drive that will connect to MLK, as well as putting a regional detention pond on a little over nine-acre track just to the east of that Technology Drive Extension. On the west side of that extension, what that will allow us to do is actually open up a 10-point, yes, a 10.5-acre lot that could potentially be subdivided for smaller projects, or looked at for a much larger project. If we keep the detention where we had originally planned, that was part of some of the original documents, that detention pond would be moved to the far north, northern portion of the property, and would restrict us to about a seven-and-a-half to eight-acre piece of This will also allow us to capture a lot more water and slow it down before it goes into Gil's Branch on the far west side of this drawing here, and allow us to slow all of that down, because Gil's Branch, as we all know, in the past, has been an issue from a drainage, I'm sorry, a flooding standpoint. So with that, one of, one of, one of the things that is currently sitting on the table is an inter-local agreement with the county. And that is for them to look at the nine-acre piece of property, that is an extreme challenge from numerous standpoints. The top portion, which is on the far east section there, that is on Jackson Street, from that portion down to the detention pond is a significant drop off to the west, which is why we decided to move that detention up, is to capture all of that drainage. There is also some dirty fill on that property with rebar and cement that had been dumped there. It is also a nice connector for the county for direct access to the county jail, they could build a covered, secured walkway from the county jail to this new Justice Center. And so that is, that is everything that we're looking at in regards to those two properties and putting in the Technology Drive Extension for this project.
Do we have timing on the Justice Center at all?
So the last I talked to the judge, they said it's, originally it was five years, now I think we're.
Yeah, but that was four or five years ago.
I was gonna say, I think we're now at three, so we're getting a little closer. I could, would definitely touch base with him and find out if that is something, or we can, you know, encourage them to make that a quicker process.
That, in fact, he was looking to talk to his commissioner's court about scheduling a bond program to fund expansion at some point in the future.
Yes.
So from the very beginning, South was gonna just dead-end?
So, no ma'am, well, so that's exactly what my next slide talks about.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're fine, that's, it's, the, and we can flip back and forth through the pictures. And the kind of question here where we have those policy gaps are, you know, what are those next steps? Do we want to revise this development agreement and develop a plan for the park? Do we want to? Because what that allows you to do is not, not use a TIA and not build sidewalks. And where we're in conflict there is that, that messes up our multimodal, that goes against the codes. What we have here is an example of a design that was started, where we didn't collaborate early on, and it's gonna cause us issues with development. Not only is the county, when they decide to develop this Justice Center, they're gonna have to, they're technically a planned development agreement, which means rezoning and lots of other steps. So what I would hope we would do is, this is an opportunity for us to collaborate and fix it. And I want to, and what we're looking for here is, how do we fix it? What's the policy gap? Do we do that through an inter-local agreement? Do we, is this water under the bridge, and we're gonna move forward and let this be done through an ILA? Are we going to, after this is over, develop a whole land plan for the industrial park? You know, and at that point, if that's the decision we make, kind of some of the models that we've used in the past, and we'll talk about these, are absolutely, you know, EDC funds a lot of projects, and anything that's public property is managed by the City of Bastrop. And again, anything on that private realm is managed, again, by the EDC, if it wants to be incentivized, or you want to provide resources, or something of that nature. With that, I'll flip back, and we can take any questions, Mayor, if you want to start here, as far as South Street, the plan here is to remove South Street, and that's what the judge's request is.
Would you use your fancy little deal and make sure everyone knows where South Street is?
Right there.
Thank you.
So there is now a detention pond right through the middle of South Street.
And while you're there, would you also show them where Jasper is?
There. This is, actually Jasper's up one more. Yeah, this is Mill Street.
That's.
Right above to the north is Jasper Street.
So, but that's Mills.
That is Mill, there's actually already county buildings built over Mill Street. That was an example of. That was an example of, again, it's going to be another step. The building was done, the building was built, the right-of-way was never quite abandoned, and now we're going to have to replat all that. Again, another step in the process based on this project, which we're going to, you know, it may not seem as efficient as possible because we have to go through all these different steps. But some of it's stuff that we can't control, and that's why I'd like us to work on a plan right now.
Yeah, because it would seem like abandoning Mill Street and whatever we're going to do, we got to get all of that stuff done. That's how we get close to shovel-ready. And if we're going to have an industrial park and we want to be shovel-ready, that's not a good time to say, oh, sorry, we need to abandon Mill Street. I think that's your point.
That is my point. And not only, not only this project in particular, but, and I know Jean can talk about this a little more, but there are, she has quite a few leads in the lower half of the park, and that's in your slides. And those 10 acres that are opened up by, one of the benefits, I'll say, about that project for the county, I don't want to talk bad about the project, but it actually does add 10.5 acres of developable land to your west, right? And that's right here. And, and that's important. The point is, is, is she has plans for to sell this property. There are people I know are having leads and we're having this discussion, but we don't have a plan yet. And I'd like to ask you guys tonight to have a discussion on, do we do that through a development agreement? Do we renegotiate a development agreement, or do we just follow the current standards and, and policy direction that we have? Right? That's, that's the real question. That's the gaps that we have. Sorry. Going too far.
Just let me ask a quick question if you don't mind. What would be the quickest solution to get, get to get done in order to move on to really develop it how we need to develop it?
To me, to me, the quickest solution is to, if you want to do the ILA for this project, and this is kind of water under the bridge, we'll review it under the current development standards and regulations, and you'll have a development agreement, I'm sorry, an ILA established with the county. That is probably the quickest way. It does not take any additional planning. It does not help you with the other 90 acres you have left in the park. But if we're interested in just this project that is five years away, then we can get that done in a hurry. Or we can make a plan and take care of all of it. That's kind of what I'm asking. So I think the quickest way in the future is to plan it now.
What would we need to do to develop the 90 acres? Do we need to go back and do any of those other steps that you're talking about?
We don't have to do the development agreement, I mean, per se, right? But there are, there's still the same exact requirements as developing anywhere else, right? If the property needs to be platted, then it needs to be platted. If we're interested in the development agreement, we'll do. But there, there are still several steps, right? You still have to build the infrastructure, the roads need to go in.
But it would be under the initial development agreement.
It'll be under the current rules and regulations.
Trey, was there also some talk about a railroad crossing and the tying into MLK?
Um, that, there was a long time ago. Talking about here in the park?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're talking about farther
The tying into MLK from the industrial park.
Yes, this Technology Drive
Yes.
is, is MLK, yes, it ties into MLK.
Okay.
You're absolutely right. So you're bringing Technology Drive, and it ties into MLK at South Street.
And by looking at MLK, there's going to be a lot of utilities need to be moved, and the street's going to have to be widened because it's just a one-car street right now.
Sure. It's about a 23-foot-wide residential street and a 40-foot-wide road to, yes.
Okay, so can I just make everybody mad and throw out, you know, that was, that was then, and that was when, when they first came up with that plan. They thought the whole industrial park was going to be developed in the next four to five years, right? And then some of you, I don't know if any of you guys were on the EDC board then, it was way before me. There was like a, there was no movement out there for a long time. And there was a discussion of, do we even keep marketing it, and do we even want to still own it? I mean, we have been through a lot of, Doc, you, I'm sure you were maybe back on council during part of that with the, what are we going to do with it? It's not like people were banging down the doors to, to go out to the industrial park. So that's the caveat for what I'm about to say. Knowing now what we know, and on Jasper, and I'm cheating and looking at the satellite, we know that now on Jasper, there's that development that's in place that's going to have a daycare and a gym, and it's kind of right behind the Jack-in-the-Box. In my mind, and I understand that the whole point of extending technology was because in, for whatever purposes, essentially, we had developed an industrial park with one way in and one way out. And, and, and we know that we don't like doing that in Bastrop. I'm wondering, can the way out be Jasper? And not have the way out of the industrial park going through a residential neighborhood? And is there a way with signage and street rightaways that you narrow down MLK so that it's, you know, it's, it's, yes, it's physically a way, but it's, it's more of residential traffic kind of a way, and that you encourage commercial traffic to take a right on Jasper and go out to the street that it just so happens you can turn left on and be at a major intersection? Because I don't really want to sit over the public hearing of you are dumping the industrial park traffic into a neighborhood. I'm also aware of what we didn't know in 2013. The Art Institute is, is, has got their administrative offices over here at the Art Center. Some of their students are going to be parking at the convention center. Jean's going to get us electrical, we're going to have electrical and plumbing going in that Dig Tech building. So if there was a way that you could get under the bridge, if you were a student, and you could get under the bridge and get to the Dig Tech building, you wouldn't really be interested in all of the rest of the industrial park. But if there was a little bit of school traffic, because those classes at ACC are going to be kind of off and on, that's not like an eight-to-five sort of job. I'm just, I've got some concerns about MLK being huge, and what we're doing with them is dumping them through a residential neighborhood. Oh, but wait, we're making them turn 90 degrees to then make them turn 90 degrees to cross over a railroad track to now be on the other side of the frontage road where they still have, it's still hard to get on the freeway one way or the other. Anybody got any thoughts about that?
Well, there's still a little bit of residential on that street that you were just mentioning out there. It's not as much, because a lot of it has been sold and it's being transformed and everything, but there's, there's still a neighborhood there, too, that might be affected by that with the traffic going through there. But not as much, I guess, as MLK.
The majority of Jasper, according to this, there's, yeah, there's very few homes, and the homes that are there are fronting on MLK.
MLK.
So, other thoughts? Councilmember Rogers?
The other thing about MLK going up underneath the bridge is looking to another school zone right there, and putting more traffic in this, in that school zone.
I just think you're dumping them into no man's land where it's hard to get anywhere.
And that land is undeveloped right now as it is. Like you said, there's only a couple of homes over there. Other than that, it's pretty much undeveloped. So if we could tie the two in, not only would it save money, but it would probably also do what you're talking about as far as reducing the traffic stress and giving the people an ability to turn on a major intersection. Great idea.
A great idea from Ron.
I said a great idea to the mayor. How about that?
Wow. Mr. Peterson, what do you think about that?
Just to add to that, I think you're going in the right direction because right now, there's a lot of traffic. It's supposed to be cleared over the finish of the 71 overpass, but there's a lot of traffic being dumped on MLK, and people, they, they come around the corner 60 miles an hour, and that's what they're doing. And right now, it's kind of a scary neighborhood that I'm waiting for them to finish 71, see if that'll help some.
So I sort of feel like the, the right-of-way and the pavement width, if you were, you know, if you were going down MLK and it was wide, and then the wide street is take a right on Jasper and it narrows down a bunch to go straight, I'm, I'm going to be inclined to, there's the over, you know, does that kind of make sense?
That's okay. It's a great conversation.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, you're okay. So, so we have talked about some of the things that you guys have brought up. And we are looking at options to mitigate that on the front end in the meantime. Because please remember that the majority of this portion is being paid for through a bond that is specific to an infrastructure within the industrial park. So anything beyond that, we would need to look at as an additional project in some form or fashion. So.
Well, so are you saying that it's only being paid for as far as MLK that goes to the, to the limit of the industrial parks? Okay.
So as, you know, as we continue
And that's not at Jasper?
No, that is at Mill Street. So you have South Street.
But your industrial park says your industrial park's farther north than that.
And Mill Street is as far, because that's where that, that first building right there. This building right here, and this lot right here, that is the jail.
Gotcha.
This is the beginning of our industrial park, which is South Street. So we are actually building, just beyond that, are ready to help capture, again, some drainage issues that were going across the railroad tracks into Gil's Branch. So I guess my point is, is that if we can get this completed as a project that was started four years ago and get it done, then we can start looking at beyond that. And, and fixing that kind of circular, which is our ultimate goal, is to get the traffic back out to 71 and not down MLK, but to also provide safety and accessibility from emergency standpoint and safety factors.
So you're saying that the MLK between Jasper and Mill is outside of the industrial park? So our plan is to have this major road dump into, to Mr. Peterson's point, this little bitty residential road?
So it currently does narrow just beyond that to tie in. But again, we can, we can mitigate that on the front end by putting no truck traffic beyond this point. We're putting a dead end right there for right now until we can sort out the additional portion. But we're, we're just trying, right now, there's nothing.
Well, a dead end is hardly better than nothing, right?
You have other development projects where you just have a road down the middle of nowhere dead-ending.
Well, no we don't, Mr. Gossip, because we've got the grant, and we've got the plans, and that's needed, so.
And at the same level, we've got the money and the development for the tech, for the technical park, the technology park, in order to develop that. And then from then on out, it can be later developed, what is, what is the choice for the city for the best outlet? At this point, it's emergency secondary outlet. The trucks and everything as designed would still come through the way they do today.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not like you're driving the trucks onto MLK, but you're still providing the, oh shit, the place is on fire, how do we get out?
That's the technical term for the emergency exit?
Yeah, the emergency exit. So you, then you've got the way out, and at that point, I think everyone's looking for how to, how to just move themselves out. And I don't think it becomes the number-one egress and route for that, for the process, so. But that's kind of where we had it at that point in the design and the concept.
Well, but the bond money for the industrial park is also different than, we just got told earlier that we could use 4B funds for infrastructure. Wouldn't Mr. Zek, that section that would connect the industrial park that would benefit the, and is compliant with the city's transportation, would that qualify as infrastructure for 4B funds? Which I realize may have to be different than bond funds.
Right, and I think that's my point is
No, that's fine, but I'm wanting to know if 4B funds can be used to solve that problem.
Sure.
But I think that would be a tough call, because you don't need it to develop the business. It's already there, the roadways are already fine.
But no, I completely disagree with you, because the 4B funds don't say only to improve the industrial park. The 4B funds can be used for new and expanded businesses, and that connecting that road to Mill Street and to Jasper, it, it's not 4B funds can only be used to improve the industrial park.
I didn't imply that. What I said is, you don't need that road in order to develop the industrial park.
But if you have that road, you can develop other things. Yes.
Yeah, that, what I'm saying is you need another case for what are you going to develop along that road?
Yeah, but, but the 4B funds, we don't have to do the development. It makes the development available for other people.
Right.
We are creating developable shovel-ready property.
Has to be justified on that.
Yeah, it puts the infrastructure in place in order to do that. We have the ability to have infrastructure, money used for infrastructure. So yes, it goes along with expanding current and future business. To me, it fits perfectly.
Particularly if it complies with the master transportation plan that council's approved and wants that development. You were saying, what do you want Bastrop to look like? Well, we'd like this part, this is how we want the roads. This is how, you know.
So may I say
Sure.
one quick thing is something that we'll definitely need to evaluate and something that, that we've already been looking into are those lots beyond. Because currently, right now, some of those are owned by the county, and some of those are owned by the housing authority, and then the other ones are residential. And so we're going to have to be creative and very careful as to identify the new and expanded business opportunity, because remember, it's new and expanded business opportunities, not existing opportunities. And so we just need to collectively look at those lots and identify what is capable to fit into that new and expanded business opportunities. And I think that that is probably why Sean, and I hate to throw his name out there, but he is the one that started the project, that that's why he stopped the project where we, we took it basically as far as we could to identify new and expanded business opportunities outside of the business park.
Okay, but aren't we just really talking about a road in an egress and ingress? Isn't that really what we're talking about primarily? Is, is a road plus maybe underground utilities? We're not really talking about developing that, that property necessarily.
But one drives the other in regards to our funding. So that's a Charlie question.
I think it's a discussion point.
It's not always a legal question, folks.
That's a Charlie question.
From a, from a fire, from a fire access point, that's the requirement for the roadway, right? There should have been a secondary way in before. It can be South Street, I believe. You're absolutely right. The road could even be built without the detention piece at this, at this point. If the, if the goal is to just put a road out of the business park, a secondary way out, that can be done, and it won't impact the drainage at all. That pond is for the developing of those other lots. If the goal, again, is just to put a road in there, we can do that now and then wait for the development to come and still have a plan. It's, it's, again, but the policy gap, I'll go back to my original slide, is not how we build the project, but how we review the project. And we current, we had a 2013 agreement that allowed certain things, not to require a TIA and not to require sidewalks. If we have not continued that agreement, you will be following the current standards. And that's the policy direction that we need. Currently, it's complete, the way I understand it. Now, we can go into renegotiate for phases two through six, but it's technically complete. All the work in phase one was complete. And accepted. So again, that's the policy gap, sorry.
Clear, and correct me if I say something wrong, but trying to get a, make sure we're answering the mayor's question completely. That 2013 development agreement described phase one, which is complete, but it also, it said these rules apply essentially to phases two through six. And so that, and that's at the heart of the direction that we're, we're seeking here. We can either call that 2013 development agreement complete and, and move on. That would have implications for the, the development standards we follow from this point forward. And the, and the real question, I think, the way to answer that question is for a policy discussion to take place. What standards do we want to apply here to the future development of the business park? Do we want to continue to not build sidewalks, which is, which is fine? That's inconsistent with today's development standards. Do we want to require TIA's as we move forward? Again, 2013 agreement says no to both, no sidewalks, no TIA's. And so we're, we're at a point where we need that direction moving forward.
So council, where are you on those two things? Who wants to go first? And we're not voting tonight, but we need to have some conversation about it. Everyone is not making eye contact.
Well, I'm not sure if sidewalks are real important in an industrial area, if that's one of the things that we're looking at. I mean, this isn't quite, from what I see, which not being a developer at all, you know, isn't the same area that we were looking at in B3 codes and wanting all the connectivity in the squares. So I don't think sidewalks is that big of a-
Ron, Ron.
Huge deal.
We can't hear.
So.
So you were saying you think sidewalks maybe don't make sense in the industrial park? Do they make sense going to the Dig Tech building where there's school? Or who knows what the Dig Tech's building's going to be in five years?
That's where I'm at.
Okay. Let me, let me ask another way for policy direction. Is council interested in seeing sidewalks in the industrial park? Yes or no? Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
I, I, I am.
Sidewalks, yes?
Sidewalks, yes.
Councilmember Peterson? Sidewalks, yes? Councilmember Crouch? Sidewalks, yes? Councilmember Rogers? Sidewalks, no? Councilmember Jackson? Sidewalks, yes? Sounds like there's a thought process for sidewalks.
Isn't this like a, this isn't an elementary school, these kids are going to have cars.
Yeah, but they may be walking from where.
I see city office employees walking inside walk all the time just for their lunch break or coffee break or whatever.
Okay. Okay, I think based on previous opinions, I think Ms. Young would like to make a comment about sidewalks in an industrial park.
I think first of all, it, it's a question of are they meandering sidewalks that imply this is a park and open space for the public? Or are they sidewalks that connect businesses and parking lots for the employees who work there? My concern is that industrial parks are not safe places for children and families to recreate. And so when you, when you build sidewalks in open space, I don't know the legalities of this, but from my perspective, the general public sees the word park, not industrial. And if you've opened the space to what looks like recreation, then you've implied in, and from my perspective, you've invited this, the public into, to recreate in an industrial park. So I think it's very key to know where do these sidewalks go? And are they strictly from business to parking lots and business to business? Or are they meandering pathways that appear in-
I don't think we're trying to do nature trails through there, but I understand. But it seems like part of what could happen is even, it seems, we all know the cheapest, if you're going to have a sidewalk, the cheapest time to build it's when you're building the street. But if you have concerns about open areas, it could be, here's the street and then the cross section, and as the property's developed, they put in the sidewalk when the building's there, and now you have your connection for your parking lot and your employees. And to Jimmy's point, sometimes people want to walk not just from the parking lot to their building, but they may want to go for a little bit of a walk as an adult. We have no idea what the uses are going to be.
They may want to walk the sidewalk to that and then you're going to end up like we have downtown with the-
Disconnected.
The blocks that don't even have a sidewalk and then put them on in eighty years.
So when you see it, are you thinking of a six-foot sidewalk against the back of the curb kind of thing?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Did anybody think meandering?
No, I'm looking more utilitarian.
Utilitarian, and I'm thinking about also if the business, if the industrial park and, you mentioned daycare earlier, and people coming out there with, that have their, their kids and things too, there, those sidewalks might be used for that too, because there may be a daycare that's needed out there to work with the different people that are, that are-
The daycare was up on Jasper, but to your point, we don't know what might eventually be out there.
We don't know what's, yes. But I mean, and the way businesses are going, they are trying to do daycare so that the parents can actually function and have on more onsite work.
And are you going to want to light them? Or it's only going to be daylight sidewalks? And then ADA, of course, which then goes back to the industrial estate, which is not a general public type area, but, you know, again, to what extent is everything going to be installed and developed?
And do you build bike lanes as well, since it's multimodal transportation? Where, where's the, how do you tell the public, we don't allow skateboards and scooters and bicycles in the industrial park? Or is that something you want as well? Because they all, that's all part of the B3 codes.
Yeah, we don't allow skateboards on the-
Okay. Because that was the way it has been explained to me, that those would be things that would be part of it. So that's why I'm asking the questions.
What part of that actually backs up to like the green spot, like next Tahitian that-
Backs up to the railroad tracks.
But I mean, the industrial park does go back that way, correct?
Yes, up on the ridge.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am. On the far eastern side.
Right, but not this section.
Yeah, not on that section.
I understand that, not this particular section.
Well, but this section isn't really what we're talking about because it's already covered in the 2013.
You were talking the section two through six.
We're talking about two through six.
Right? Which is, so you, you're going to have no sidewalks to get in, but you're going to have sidewalks in areas two through six. That just doesn't make sense to me.
And two through six backs up where compared to Tahitian? So eventually, one day, hopefully one day somewhere, that's going to all be neighborhood, maybe? My point, exactly. You're going to be coming from a park, greenery area, and you see sidewalks. I'm just think, I think once you put sidewalks in, then you got lighting, you got other things. If the person that's putting the business in, if they want to put a sidewalk to their parking lot, let them. But I don't think it's a neighborhood, a shopping center where the sidewalks are necessary. But that, again, I'm just one vote.
And I would also like to, really quick, on the ACC campus aspect and, and even community actions, their classes will be after hours, not during business hours, and also on the weekends. So from a school traffic standpoint, it would definitely be after hours and not, not during work, eight to five, Monday through Friday. It would be after hours.
So they could ride their bike to Dig Tech if they wanted to, because they're probably not going to see any other traffic?
Correct.
Under, from the convention center, you could go under MLK and up the hill. Okay, so council, council member Rogers was no on sidewalks from the get-go. Has anybody changed their opinion based on the conversation, or they still want sidewalks in two through six? Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
I'm assuming, I'm assuming the, the board is not on board with sidewalks in the industrial park. Do I assume correctly?
No, really, ultimately, yeah.
You know, we, we look at multi-mobility, we, we look at optimizing access to various locations, whether it be residential, commercial, or industrial. But I mean, y'all's, y'all's arguments are certainly valid, especially the issue relative to the added cost of lighting and ADA access of-
Don't we have streetlights out there now?
There's streetlights.
There's streetlights.
There's, there's a few businesses too. I mean, it has, again, when, whenever, whenever this, this develops, again, this map, I think is very important. Gene has a lot of leads. What we're saying is, this is going to develop and is going to develop soon. Are you, and if we're not doing that, and I think there's consensus saying you want sidewalks, which means we're going to do this particular project through an ILA here and get this done now. And then the rest of the park will be developed based on the current codes. With public frontage plans. And that doesn't necessarily have to be done, you know, at the planning stage. It can be done as the developer comes in and buys and so on and so forth.
If I understand correctly, the, the current code means you have to have sidewalks?
Correct. There's a public frontage plan. And that's, your question was, what's the quickest way? That is the quickest way to start.
I understand the ILA for, for that piece right there. I'm just saying that we need to think about this. If we go that route, that we don't, we only do an ILA for that one right there, and then we just keep the current ones. That means it's a de facto, we're going to have sidewalks. But yet, we're hearing differences of opinions on the sidewalk issue.
It's not de facto, we have agreement says we don't need to do that. You have to change the agreement in order to then require it.
I'm just saying that the, the current regulations and codes state that you have to have sidewalks, correct?
But not in the industrial park, because we're under a different agreement. The current agreement does not require that.
Only if you develop a plan for phase two through six, which you failed to do.
Correct.
That's my point, is either we develop two through six and come up with a plan that you two can hash out and adopt at city council, or it's looked at under the current codes. All the improvements for project phase one are complete. So the next thing you do is add two through six. This would be part of two through six. It doesn't follow, we, we don't have this in the development agreement, and we're going to develop the rest of the park in the future. It's the policy discussion.
Here's, let me try and come back. If, if I was me, and I am, I would try, I think, I would today, I would try, my, my view would be, I would like to develop two through six just the same way as we've developed one.
Sure.
So I would, so I think what you're saying is, we would have to bring a plan to city council-
Correct.
For two through six, and we would say, we don't want sidewalks, we don't want lights.
That's correct.
We want it under the 2013 development code.
What you're, what we're talking about is that process we talked about in one of those first slides.
Yeah.
And that's doing something different. So you're asking-
And then the city council could say yes or no.
Correct.
Okay.
But again, that will add to the time of the process. Right? Because it's based off a policy direction.
Well, yeah, we, but we still have to get that policy direction.
Well, you have it, it's to build sidewalks. That's, that's my point, is, is they, they just, four people just said they wanted to, and that's what I have to follow.
Well, we could wait a couple of years.
It's true.
There's an election every May, Sam, every May, every May. Go ahead, Jimmy, what you were, you made a comment.
Well, I, I don't, as far as going to a liability, because you were talking about liability, if people walk down there, why, why wouldn't the city have liability because there's no lights? That's, that ought to be a bigger liability than any sidewalk.
I assume you're asking me that question.
Well, I mean, you were the one that said you don't want people meandering down there.
I said my concerns are safety.
And if you put lights up, they might meander down there. And I, it, I don't know why you wouldn't want that lit up like you have every other street in town lit up. Maybe they're further apart, but I think you ought to have lights and a sidewalk.
And those are decisions for y'all to make.
And you're all about mobility, we're stressing mobility, right? For different modes of mobility and walking and making everything pedestrian-friendly. And I get it, it's an industrial park, but what, what about the employees of the industrial park?
My, I think my issue is, it's only sections two through six. If, if we, if, if we said, okay, now we need to build sidewalks in all the industrial park, that's one thing. But it's the fact that the city, and this is again, this is policy, to me, it looks a little weird that you want to build a sidewalk to nowhere, from nowhere to nowhere. So that those people can walk from one building to another and they're not related. They're potentially different companies. And if they, if they were united, if they, if, if the one company bought that whole track, then they would put in their own walking paths and sidewalks and things like that. But, you know, and we have, we have a, a company that's, that's willing to do that.
On their property.
On their property, yeah. So to me, it, it, the obvious thing to me is, from my perspective, it just looks silly that you putting a sidewalk from here to here-
On the green part.
On the green part, on the only lower part, and lights, and nothing on, to get there.
Okay, but we said there's lights on the, in the northern part.
But no sidewalks.
Yeah, I, I understand, but you could add them, right?
So, to be clear-
The city could add them.
Right, so you're absolutely right.
The city could ask BEDC to add them.
Yeah, the city could do that too, yeah.
Yes.
So to be clear, that's exactly right. There, it's, there's oftentimes, we still do gap completion projects to enhance that multi-mobility.
Yeah, but I think that would have to be the thought process. It's either, it's either the whole industrial park or it's two through six.
Exactly what I was saying.
Okay. Not just, you can't do one section without doing the other section.
I agree. That's, that's, to me, that's the irony. You know, it's like, okay, we're going to have a sidewalk from here to here and lights from here to here.
No.
You're also going through a near impossible intersection at 71 and Jackson. I mean, I mean, for, to do anything in there, you got to get through that. And, I mean, I don't, I don't see how you, you know, who's going to go park at Quick Trip now, I guess, and then go, you know, do a walkabout in the industrial park? If you're, if it's multimodal, you got to get through that intersection somehow as a pedestrian. That's, doesn't seem, you know, logical to me.
Well, you could go under, under MLK is the way that you would do it.
There's no sidewalks on MLK either, is there?
No.
There's, there's not now, but the city's plan is that there would be sidewalks on every street is the point.
So, again-
Okay, Drew's got two.
These aren't companies that are going to have walk-by traffic. These employees are going to come to that job, they're going to stay there, they're going to go home. You know, and most of the time, the two companies really don't want my employees over there in your company, and I really don't want you over in my company, you know, that's why they're in an industrial park.
What are you getting me? You can have your sidewalks, all right? See, a little jumpy, a little jumpy. But the, but the point of this conversation is, it doesn't matter how strongly BEDC board feels about something, it's a waste of time and money if you bring something that council says, no, that's not what we want. So now, you can be irritated, that's fine, but let's figure it out so that nobody's wasting time and money and effort. So right now, so Doc, are you sidewalks or no sidewalks? So you want sidewalks in the entire industrial park?
Can I ask you a question before you go anywhere?
Sure.
So what do we think roundabout figure it would take to put sidewalks in the park that doesn't have sidewalks right now? We need to look at what kind of money you're, you're asking these people to front to fix something to make it the way you want it.
Yeah, I understand that with the exception that this is a policy conversation, and, and it, and I don't want money to drive it. Because what if I said, it's 50 bucks and we can get a grant? Or it's a million dollars and it's going to come out of your pocket? You know, let, let's have the upper conversation, and maybe it's a plan of, we're going to add in section one as we get grants or something like that. But fundamentally, as hard as it is, take the money part of it out, have the logical, does it make sense? Do we, as the city of Bastrop, want sidewalks in an industrial park?
I, I would ask before you act, I don't think we need a decision tonight.
Right. Yeah, we can't vote, but when it happens-
Even, I would ask the city to, maybe, or maybe we can do this as, as staff, to look at other industrial parks and survey industrial parks to see if they have sidewalks and lights. I mean, that, unless we want to just be that different, I don't know what the, I truly do not know what the answer is. But I suspect it's that we don't have sidewalks and, and lights in most industrial parks. Well, let's find out. Let's, let's find out.
And what I was going to say, we've got plenty of time to think about this, folks.
Well, except that they're wanting to get two through six done, and staff needs to know, are we following the old ILA or are we following the new B3 code? That's, so if we-
I would suggest that we probably design it to have sidewalks and lights, and then we can talk about whether we have to put them in or not. Because the roads are going to have to be the same width, right?
Yeah, get the right of way for it.
Yeah. It's our land, so I guess we don't have two issues with the right of way.
Yeah, we ought to be able to acquire the-
Except maybe section one.
Yeah, we ought to be able to acquire the right of way. But then the other bigger question is, do you want the rest of the sections to follow the B3 code? Or do you want the rest of the industrial park to follow the old code? And that's things like where the building's located on the property tray?
And an important part to remember, this is actually zoned EC, right, Employment Center, which was a zoning type that was brought up by the BEDC.
On purpose, yes.
So that you could establish those and set them, you could establish your setbacks as each person comes in for what your needs are.
Okay, so, and that's an awesome thing.
What you can't change is the public frontage plans with the sidewalks.
That's what I was going to ask. So really and truly-
That can't be done by warrant.
B3 or not B3, what's the biggest difference for-
The sidewalks, the lights, the landscape, all of that stuff. All that multimodal cross-sections that are in the code.
And the last thing you want in industrial estate is trees next to the roadway where you got to keep slapping trucks with trees, which we already do downtown now, and we put more trees on downtown roads where trucks go. So, I mean, again, it's the long term, little trees become big trees and, you know.
They keep getting hit.
Is there a downside to developing that section under the same development agreement that section one was developed in? I mean, well, the sidewalk issue set aside, is there a downside to continue with the existing development agreement?
The only other thing that you're exempt from is the TIA, and that TIA would look at those outside improvements that are off-site, so.
Yeah, but come on, that's 71, that's the intersection of 71.
Right.
Which it is what it is and we don't have any control over.
Sure, but it would also look at your impact in that residential neighborhood. That would have been a requirement that you currently don't have.
Connecting back to Tahitian?
Wherever, yes, all of that.
Again, again, this, you can see from here, even there was a plan to tie into a road.
I'm not really, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I'm not understanding the benefit of the TIA on when it's generally going to be big blocks and they're going to place the building and their parking lot's going to be the way it needs for whatever the business is, whether that's backing up trucks or, right?
So I can say that, and maybe this helps, the, the TIA requirement is waived if you build the grid. So that's, that's what our, our code speaks to. So if you build what's on the master transportation plan, which is kind of similar to what's here, you're right, I don't think the TIA has that big of an impact. I think the current plan shows some kind of loop that does something like this, right?
So why would you do a TIA if you're hooking two lands together?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, that's, I'm just saying that's the other, that's the other thing the agreement speaks to.
Okay, so I'm, does anybody think we need a TIA? I know what you guys think.
Yeah, I'm just.
Anybody want a TIA? Okay.
Again, setting the sidewalk issue aside, is there a downside to continuing with the existing development agreement for the development of two through six?
And then, to Mr. Gossett's point, we know what the rules are, rock and roll. And now, and that, but what BEDC, not us, but prior to us, failed to do was come up with a plan for two through six. So that, I feel like council is saying to BEDC, it'd be a really good idea for you guys to come up with a plan for sections two through six.
Yes.
And then I would also encourage us, you know, in an industrial park, you want the right of way, and like you said, we own the property now, and then the sidewalk conversation can be addressed at another time and another day and another way.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Did that help? Did we?
Yes, I have it.
Okay. Mr. Peterson says you are getting on my nerves. What else do you people want to talk about, right?
We're, I think there's only just a few short slides and we're only a few minutes behind schedule. Not really. This is, this is just some projects we, we worked on together in the past, I won't go over all of them, and some that we're going to work on together. There's land that can be developed, this is kind of.
What color is land that came banned you developed?
So, so I'm going to get to that.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
We didn't want you to read ahead and cheat, so.
Yeah, you knew I would.
The dark purple is, is P5, right? And that is zone commercial technically, it's place type five. And what I wanted to point out here is if you look what's highlighted in blue, there is limited, is what we talked about earlier, limited open space that's available. Some of it has development agreements on it. What, what does 1400, 340 and 1200 represent is the number of homes that we know that we have an agreement on right now that are fixing to start building, right? The spot around it, this is an opportunity to develop that playbook, exactly what you were talking about. That developer's handbook, this is an opportunity to do it citywide. I suggest we also do it at a park level, but we need to do it here. And this, and then you can market that to your targeted industries.
Okay, so talk about what the, each of those projects are, so everybody gets oriented.
So, I'll just give you some.
It's kind of hard to tell on that.
Sorry.
What streets are where?
This is, this is Hunter's Crossing.
So 340 is the Grove.
340 is the Grove. Lennar is building 340 homes now. This is the Veridian Development Agreement.
That's being discussed tomorrow night.
That's being discussed tomorrow night. They're proposing 1400 homes.
And the 1200 is Bastrop Village West?
The 1200 are Bastrop Village West, and they're already breaking ground. This is, is, is Highway 20, to give you a reference of where we're at. What you see is anything in the hashed mark, and you can see that in your book, that has a development agreement on it. So it automatically has a built-in step that says you go to annexation the minute you decide to develop. So, the, the ones that have hashes, hash marks, that are hatched, right, there's one here, and there's one here, and there's a couple here, those all currently have a development agreement on them. So I brought this up because this is why the playbook's important. The stuff that's blue in the yellow area, that's in the Iredale District. It takes certificates of appropriateness for what you're going to build, right? One more step. The stuff that is, that is unhatched has a development agreement. So again, you're going to add 90 days for annexation automatically. I propose that we work together, land planner, however we want to do that, and develop a strategy for each one, which gives you something to market. And it's targeted well, because you're limited in the space that you have. And that, I think it's important to think about when you're doing your strategic meeting, which is why I brought this up. We have an opportunity to work together to continue to collaborate and just sit down and get that done.
So certificate of appropriateness goes through the Historic Landmark Commission.
Correct.
And I totally understand that if I'm rebuilding a house that burnt down on Pecan Street. Not sure I understand that for the entire yellow line. Is it, does council have an opportunity to keep it in the Iredale District but waive the requirement for a certificate of appropriateness to a specific that makes sense area?
I do think we could establish some things that could adopt that would exempt you from that requirement. And that might be the approach.
I thoroughly think we should do that. Does anyone disagree?
But again, the point of this slide was to say, hey, look, all of this is different. One's got the 120 days on it, one doesn't. So let's develop something that every, so the process isn't so different every time and the rules aren't changing. They're really not, you know what the rules are upfront, it's just different pieces of property have different encumbrances. And then not only when we talk about land development, let's talk about community development, it's not all about streets and drainage and water lines. We also got some quality of life issues, and this is, well, I swear, we're really close on the last slide. There are a couple targeted infrastructure things we would like you to consider at your next regular meeting and budget workshop, the EDC to consider. Some, a way to, we can look for a way to fund the old Iron Bridge, recreation center, a sports complex, which is part of your plan, some downtown, downtown lighting. A street extension, there is a match associated with that with the grant, it's 1% of the overall cost. And then broadband feasibility study, again, something I think that's all meets. Mr. Zekel will give us the.
I don't think the recreation center does.
Well, no, you're right, but that's, the point is, these are all things that are, I think, worth looking at, and we can decide how to fund them separately, but that's the conversation we hope you have. That's it. Again, this is the Agnes Street, this is the Agnes Street project.
Wait, 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 go back. What did you say, Councilmember Roden?
Said if you put a big pool in the recreation center, he said a pool and a pool activity.
The Olympic pool?
It could be Olympic, yeah.
Right.
But it could be in the rec, where is it, recreation center?
Right, part of it, yeah.
See? There you go.
It could fund the pool, but it can't necessarily build the rec center.
Sure.
So it could be split funding. And the other part too is a lot of area communities use the rec center as emergency management centers or crisis centers.
Yep.
For evacuations and things like that, and so they get the grants and the money for that as well.
That's what the county's building at the rodeo arena, and instead of doing a rec center, that's what the senior center is on Linden.
Okay. And again, the goal is just to look at this list with open eyes as you go and establish your budget. This, I think, is another, our next opportunity really to collaborate together outside of the business park. Again, the city received the grant for this, this Agnes gap completion. And then there's, this is one of our capital improvement projects. Again, I think there's an opportunity to do certain things and collaborate on design that's informed by the policy direction that we've gotten tonight, and what's appropriate and missing out of the grant, not only the match, but there may be some additional things that we want to talk about, whether it be building the others outside, making a better connection there behind Seaton, or looking at the project overall.
Okay, so let me do Trey speak for you. The turquoise part is funded at four lanes.
4.2 million, yes.
Four, and four lanes, and it connects to two lanes. So it's a conversation of would it make sense, would, would, should we take some 4B money and build the other two lanes so that you have between the grant and a little bit of 4B money, you actually have four lanes that connect you from 304 all the way through? And that matches our master transportation plan.
That's right. We would also look at it overall and make sure that public frontage plan matched all the way across. So there might be sidewalk improvements, there may be tree planting, there may be additional lighting. And with that, the last of the development-related projects that I think we have opportunity to collaborate on and we should talk about is going to be broadband, which is going to be huge for the area, future roads, utilities at Correx, and then I really would like us to define at a later date, project management for the public side versus incentive side on a, on a, we really need to establish some policy guide there, right? How we manage a project when it relates to public realm versus the private side.
And council, I believe that when it comes to incentives, that although each of you are elected officials and ultimately you're, you're voting on the project, and I very much respect that, but we're looking towards the EDC board to have really vetted that and be the experts on it and, and come with a good recommendation. And one of the things that I mentioned to Janora last week was, we all can read the statutes of what the, what, what the project has to have for it to be eligible for incentives, but we're, you know, eight years ago, there wasn't anybody calling about anything in the industrial park. Now, the phone's ringing off the hook. And every economic development course I have ever been to with the, you know, economic development for dummies, AKA elected officials, is you don't incentivize people who are coming anyway. And you save and use your incentive dollars in the, to really quote incentivize the businesses that you're really going after, with the idea being that if you are business number one and it's minimum wage jobs and three employees, and it's somebody that's, maybe their business is a magnet and is going to bring other businesses and it's a higher-paying job, then that's real, you want to save your incentive dollars for projects like that. So I believe it would be helpful, before we're arguing about whose favorite person that just called, if we had a strategic conversation about what's the threshold to be eligible for incentives? And if you're this kind of a project, do you get more incentive? You know, and kind of try to put some 50,000-foot criteria around that, which I think would be beneficial to Jean, I think she's behind me, when she's meeting with folks to let them know, hey, if you can get to this number of employees, this amount of development improvement or whatever, these are the kind of incentives that are available. And I think that's a little bit of the playbook, Mr. Gossett, that you were maybe surprised didn't already exist. Am I putting words in your mouth or no?
What have you got, page approval? And none of you are just paging, just paging.
I believe that's on our list.
Okay, all right. And Chairman Nash is telling me that that was already in the, in the plan. But I think that's really important, and that then gives council some assurance of that we've, here's the criteria that we're using, this project meets that criteria, and it may help things go faster if we're, if there's an established process and we're following it, so.
Yep, absolutely. And again, this is an opportunity to incent those, based off that whole land development plan and development playbook that we just talked about. This is just another tool to help that out, to, again, streamline that process.
Okay.
That's it.
Is that it?
This is your next steps. Here's your next meetings, where we're going to talk budget and where we're going to talk strategic planning. That is, I think that's all we have.
Ms. Nash, what, what else would you like us to visit about tonight?
Well, I think we have plenty to digest. We need to obviously spend more time on our strategic planning meeting than what I think we originally have scheduled. So let's plan for a day, not just three hours or whatever it is.
I think it would be good also if we could have the city talk to us about those projects and the strategic plan. What, what is it? What do they want to have done? What would, you know, what do they think?
What kind of money are we talking about?
Right, how baked is it? You know, is it, is it just a concept? Is it, do you have plans? I mean, you know, how far along?
I think that's fair.
Like the bridge.
Yeah.
You want 12 million bucks?
Yeah.
And how's that fit into Economic Development 101? I'm not sure, but you know, that kind of stuff.
Yeah. What else? What were you dying to say that you didn't get to say tonight? Because we know you're going to, when the meeting's over, you're going to stand and talk with each other, so what do you want to, and we don't have to do it tonight, but if we need to have another meeting soon, what do we want to talk about?
I don't think we need another meeting until we have a.
So we've talked about the sports complex a year or more ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Definitely.
Kevin?
I just, I think the, the conversation we had about the sidewalks in the industrial park was a perfect example of what we need, the things that we need to hash out. Because there's two, there's two sides of it, there's, there are multi-sides of it sometimes. And, you know, for us to move forward, I mean, we need to know, you know, where y'all's heads is. Y'all's, your heads are.
When our terms are.
Yeah.
Details, details, detail.
And some of you can't run because you don't live in the city limits, so those are the ones we're hearing the most from tonight. Council, what did we not talk about that you were hoping we would talk about?
For me, playing fields, for the sports, like you were saying, the sports complex and the playing fields, I think it's a huge thing if you want to get people to come here that you have to have something for their kids to do, and we don't have anything. Well, we have a skate park and some Little League fields and then some fields across from Buc-Ee's, but I, we have to have some kind of a complex for, and then that's part of the EDC too, right? Because we can spend money on that. And I just, I think that's a huge thing. And my, for me, it is anyway.
Well, and that's, that was on the Garner strategic report for a long time, so I think we're in violent agreement that we just got to do the right thing.
Definitely.
Anything else, council?
I think the discussion is typical of the malaise we've been under for the past year, considering we hadn't met in a year and a half. And I think having, having a conversation earlier rather than later might be a benefit to both groups. And I just, I really appreciated the conversation. I sat back and listened to a lot of it, some of it I liked, some of it I didn't.
Well, if we walk away with hiring a person and maybe, you know, I don't, I know from an EDC standpoint, if we do a, like a pilot program with a third-party person that's helping with the process and, and holding, I really like the way the city manager described it of, of holding everybody accountable through the process to be able to document how long things take and where we're losing time and where we can pick up some of that time. If it ends up being two people or what, you know, whatever's needed, I think that's a great action item to have come from a result of this conversation, so.
I think when we had the EDC meeting, when I talked about having a one-pager for each project at each meeting, that's the type of person that would be able to come back and say, here's where we are, here's the roadblocks, here's where we need help, or here's, it's flowing well, and here's our dates and times, so, you know, could lead into that as well.
Well, and I'll tell you, that one slide, and these aren't numbered, so I can't tell you what page, but it's the, it's the slide that had the two green boxes with the white words in it, and on the left-hand side it said bi-weekly meetings. When I saw that slide, I thought, that's that person's job. They, they hold that bi-weekly meeting and they have the conversation with the EDC developer side and the city side, and where are we, and when's the next meeting? You know, so I, I agree, that one-pager and taking care of that, that's a job, that's Well, and I'll tell you, that one slide, and these aren't numbered, so I can't tell you what page, but it's the, it's the slide that had the two green boxes with the white words in it and on the left-hand side it said bi-weekly meetings. When I saw that slide, I thought, that's that person's job. They, they hold that bi-weekly meeting and they have the conversation with the EDC developer side and the city side and where are we and when's the next meeting? You know, so I, I, I agree, that one-pager and taking care of that, that's a job. That's a full-time job for someone.
And I think it's important, what, a good important part of, of that position, if we can get it, is it's gonna tell the city exactly where the city's standing. It's gonna say the developer where they're standing because they're not part of either one. So, you know, we all have the ugly truth of how bad or how good we're doing or where the ball actually gets dropped.
That, if we get that person filled, that's a, that was a successful meeting for tonight to be able to have, and, and to have the, who's your contact person? Oh, it's so-and-so and here's their phone number, you know, ready to go.
To quote, to quote the great Alan Borges, uh, we have the right to learn.
That's right. He's told us that all the time. Doc?
No, I just think that, um, I'm glad we had this meeting and I think we do need to go ahead and make them quarterly. I mean, I would, uh, a year and a half is too long and I know we had a lot of things happening at that time, but quarterly, so that we can agree to disagree or agree to agree. But at least we'll know where we're standing and I think we'll, we'll form a better partnership that way if we are meeting and talking it out. So I would hope that we'll start trying to plan those out.
I'm, I'm thinking two a year's gonna be tough. It's a lot of work to get ready for this, but we'll see. We, we, you know, there's only so many weeks in the year and October budget.
I think it'll impede our, our progress unless we do do it more often though.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree. And it may end up being three times a year or, you know, when needed, but let's, it certainly needs to not be 18 months.
Be nice if we scheduled the next one now.
Yes, yes. So when would you guys, you think our strategic meeting is July? You wanna do it, try to get one in before October 1 or right after the budget to make sure we're all on the same page?
Right, like October, November?
Okay. So let's, let's aim for that.
The more often you do it, the less time it's gonna take.
Exactly. I think that's what Councilmember Jackson was saying as well. All right. I have 818. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, ma'am. I'm making motion to adjourn.
City council is adjourned?
Are we adjourned?
I move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Everybody be careful going home. Thank you, staff, for all the hard work. Really appreciate it.